We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could take roll when you're ready.
Commissioner Scavdall?
Here.
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Mulder is going to be late.
Here.
Oh, he's here?
He snuck in.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner West is absent. Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Here.
And Commissioner McFarland is absent.
Thank you. Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications to the agenda. There are a couple of supplementals this evening on the dais. One is for item E3, the Fenario LLC conditional use permit. This is just modifications to the conditions of approval. It does not change the recommendation. There is a letter for the modification to the canvas ordinance from the Humboldt County Growers Alliance. And then there are a number of additional letters related to the town center.
Thank you. At this point, we'll take public comment on non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the commission on matters that are not on this evening's agenda but are under the commission's purview, now's the time to do so. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak, please approach the podium. And if you're online, please indicate by raising your hand, which I believe is star nine. I don't see anybody in the room. And I do see one hand raised online. Could we unmute Marissa, please?
Let me ask, hi.
You have three minutes. Thank you. We can hear you.
For being here tonight. I just wanted, I just wanted to ask a quick question regarding the resolution, fully in progress regarding the use of trellis netting by cultivators with best management practices. I was just wondering what was going on with that. It's been quite a long time since the commission directed the county to draft a resolution to allow that. And I was just wondering if there was any progress toward that goal.
We will be bringing that back before the end of the year.
Okay. If you heard Director Ford, he says that will be coming back before the end of the calendar year. Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public content, public comment, and we'll move to the consent agenda. I think there are four items on consent this evening. We'll go through each of the items. I'll check with the commission. I'll check with members of the public that are here in the room and online. If anybody has a question or would like us to pull any of the items from consent, we will do so and we'll take those up later in the meeting. First item is review and approval of the August 21st action summary. I will note that I was not at that meeting. It was chaired by Mr. Commissioner Levy. And that was the town center workshop. So I just want to make note that I did review that meeting in preparation for this evening's meeting. Anybody want to pull those items? Seeing none. That'll stay on the agenda. The second one is the September 4th action summaries. I'm sure it's all good with that. The third one is Fenar LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Benbow area. Commissioners? I don't see any hands in the room or online. So that will stay on the consent agenda. Item 4 Humboldt Flavor LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Larrabee Valley area. Commissioners? All good. I don't see any hands in the room or online, so that will stay. So we have four items, all on consent.
Chair Scavdall, I would move to approve the, all four items on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Levy, a second from Commissioner Mulder. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Consent items are approved. Now move to public hearings. And item one on the public hearing is our draft density bonus ordinance amendment, updating the zoning ordinance. Director Ford, staff report?
Good evening, commissioners. I am Augustus Groszha, planner for the county of Humboldt, here to present the density bonus update ordinance. Could I see my screen shared, please? Thank you. So this is mostly pertaining to density bonuses and incentives. To get into what all that means, a density bonus is a percent increase in the number of units over the maximum density that would typically be permitted. They always require a reservation of a percentage of units targeted for underserved demographics. That could be lower income. It could be senior citizens or even like a lower-income student housing. An incentive or concession is a regulatory concession such as alteration of development standards or zoning code requirements. And they need to be for reducing development costs. And additionally, just to be clear, this always all pertains to housing developments, which are development projects consisting of five or more units. That could be multifamily. It could be like a major subdivision of single-family residences. Just to make it absolutely clear what we mean when we're showing up with a density bonus, let's do a hypothetical calculation. This example parcel has a maximum density of 10 units. If 14% of the 10 units are very low-income units, then an additional 46.25% times that 10 maximum density units may be developed. All the fractional units are rounded up, so let's do that math. 14% times 10 is 1.5 units, meaning two units are going to need to be set aside. Then the 46.25 times 10 is 4.625 units, rounded up to five additional units. I was a little bit tricky with you because that result is going to be the same as 15%, which would be 50, also five. So three incentives could potentially be granted. And that would be two units set aside plus the eight that are additionally permitted by the density, plus the five density bonus units. We do already permit density bonuses. Right now, they need CUPs, but the state requires them to be ministerial. So these changes are as follows. New eligible unit types, so we're also adding the lower-income students that I mentioned, as well as transitional foster youth, which are basically aged between 18 and 21, disabled veterans, homeless persons, and adding the sale of moderate-income units compared to most of these, which could either be usually rented or sometimes rented, sometimes sold. We're also clarifying that the decision-maker for each of these are based on the approval, excuse me, the approval of a density bonus is going to be by the same authority that would approve the remainder of the project. So if a CUP is required anyways, then it would be coming up to you guys. And if it's a building permit, we further clarify that that's going to go to the planning director. There's also additions to incentives and cost reductions, well, excuse me, corrections to incentives and cost reductions. Right now, our code says necessary for financial feasibility, whereas state code says actual cost reduction. I get into this a little bit deeper in the staff report, but those are not equivalent. So we need to be saying something that means actual cost reduction and doesn't over impair the ability to issue these incentives. Additionally, a lot of values regarding the density bonuses are changed. Percentage bonuses are going up, increases to the caps in how many you can set aside and get even higher bonuses, as well as increased numbers of incentives. We're also adding to the density bonus housing agreement code, dictating that unsold-for-sale target units must be sold to nonprofits in line with state code, as well as an equity sharing agreement is required for for-sale target units. That would typically only matter in cases where a subsidy from either us or some other agency is involved, and further specifies that for the housing agreements, the planning director is the county's agent for this. And we update the replacement of existing units code. If households are displaced by development, they require replacement as, at an equivalent size. That only applies if they're rented and/or affordable units. And if they do need to be replaced, they must be affordable to and occupied by the same or lower-income category. All these changes are in accordance with Housing Element Implementation Measure Number 37, which promised that we would amend Sections 313-111 and 314-112, the density bonus sections, such that they are consistent with State Government Code Section 65915. We also included 65915.5 in our update, which applies to condominium conversions because we already included those, we already referenced it on our current code, and it's still relevant to the update itself. In conclusion, we're going to recommend adopting the resolution, which does the following. It finds that the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance are exempt from environmental review, finds that the proposed project complies with the general plan, recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the amendments to zoning regulations. Thus concludes my presentation, and I am here for any questions y'all have.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner O'Neil?
Is a lien placed on the property to ensure the compliance with the underserved target population or group? And does it pass to any buyer if it's sold, the property?
It does pass to any buyer, but that is managed by the density bonus housing agreement. It doesn't necessarily need to be a lien unless they're like in breach of it.
Who ensures compliance?
The county, the planning department would, where the agent for the execution of them.
So like five or 10 years down the road, you guys are still following up to ensure that the target population is being served?
Yes.
There is a separate segment of the planning and building department that deals solely with housing. So they would be implementing these agreements just like they implement the other agreements and the loans and the things that we have going on.
Do they put a lien on the property to ensure that it doesn't?
There's a lien on the property when there's money involved. But in the case of an affordable housing requirement, typically there's not a lien. It's, as Mr. Groschall said, it's a-
Is it forever, or is there a time limit?
It's typically a time requirement.
30 years or something like that?
The current state law requires the housing agreement to be a term of 55 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Thank you. The, let's see, just, there it is. So in section 112.1.4.2, it, I believe it talks about how applications are ministerial unless financial assistance is requested, and then it comes to the planning commission. Did I read that correctly? And if so, can you explain what that means?
Forgive me, I'm going to need to open that up real quick. That was 112, correct?
1.4.2, yes.
I believe your interpretation is correct.
So I guess, does, can you just clarify, is that, so ministerial is an easier, is a less burdensome process than coming to the planning commission? So if they're not able to pay county staff for whatever reason, then?
The financial assistance would be more likely to be for the development of the project, like subsidizing.
I see. So if for some reason, financial assistance, like tax credits or something along those lines is required for development, then for some reason, it has to come to the planning commission?
I believe it would depend on the situation. I'm not sure which credits you'd be specified.
If I could- Yes. Did this, was this something that came out of state law, or is this something-
This is state law specific.
Commissioner, before I go to the public, any other just questions of staff? Okay. Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. The, let's see, in 112.1.4.6.1.2, it, it looks like it requires the applicant to request parking ratio eligibility. And I was curious if there is a reason that we required them to request.
Again, that's, I believe, language from the state law. So requesting would be part of the application. And one could interpret that to be if your proposed parking ratio is less than what would typically be required and matches this, that's a request.
So to clarify, so a request means when you're proposing your project-
Exactly.
Rather than a separate letter?
No.
Okay.
It's the initial application.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of staff at this time? Okay. I'll go to the public. Any members of the public would like to address the commission on this draft density bonus ordinance amendment? Please approach the podium. Or if you're online, please raise your hand by, I think it's again star nine. And I don't see anybody that's going to speak on this. So I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
Yeah, okay. If I may?
Yes.
I'll just sort of ask a general question. This all seems, well, not straightforward, but well-presented, and it seems to be largely driven by state law.
Correct.
As you've said already, but I'm not entirely sure. I guess what I wanted to ask is, are there any parts of this that you felt were, I don't know, a sort of marginal call that maybe could have gone this way or that way? Are there any elements of this that you would particularly seek the commission's guidance on, other than just to approve it as directed? I guess, were there any parts of this that were maybe a little bit less straightforward than how they appear in the final, or in the draft version that we're reviewing?
We worked really closely with county council for this. So we're fairly confident that anything marginal has been, has reached a satisfying conclusion, at least. If you wanted to discuss changes, we could be less restrictive or more granting of higher bonuses. But beyond that, we're fairly tied up. And we don't quite recommend it because that might need additional CEQA compliance.
I figured that was true, and I'm certainly not, not looking to make changes just for the sake of making changes, but I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
It also, it appears, I mean, the density bonuses are similar to the county standards that, the bonuses that were existing in the past seem, but we've expanded the eligibility, if you will, in some areas, for example, the low-income students or, and some of those areas, which I think is good.
Exactly. Yeah. We removed some stuff that we were on compliant with as well, but
Yeah.
It's more, all about granting it more.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And, and coming into consistency with state law?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion? Ready?
I've got a couple more questions.
Okay.
Although, I am curious, should we open the public comment first before-
No, I opened and closed.
You're right. You did. Now I'm recalling. Thank you. I, I was curious if, so kind of going back to the, upon request of applicant, I noticed in the Section 12, which covers parking, that every item is qualified with upon request by applicant. And I was just, I guess, just kind of revisiting that a little bit more, is the applicant, maybe another way to phrase this is, when the county issues a letter in response to someone's application that tells them what bonuses and what density bonuses and incentives they're allowed, can that letter simply also tell them what parking ratios they're allowed, rather than having it qualified as upon request by applicant? Can you just simply provide them that information?
It wouldn't be out of the question to provide the reference to the parking ratio standards, but I would defer.
Yeah, I think one of the things that they tried to do here is make it actually more simple. So it's not like a permit with a lot of paperwork. It's really about, particularly when it's able to be ministerial, they come in with a plan. The plan includes a request for certain things to be granted in exchange for providing affordable housing. And, and so it's not like, we may write a letter, we may not. We will certainly document it. But it's always a reduction from whatever standards exist. And I know parking is a growing conversation and probably needs to be visited at a much larger level. But the dense, the way the density, parking is always one of those that's included in there because it just allows less room dedicated to cars. And, and so you are able to provide more units.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense. I guess I'm just curious if the applicant has to specifically request a parking ratio that is outlined in this ordinance that differs from, you know, current code, or if-
No, I don't think the parking ratio is dictated by this ordinance. The parking ratio is dictated by the zoning, elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. And then they're asking for a certain percentage reduction or a modification to that in exchange for providing affordable housing.
That's accurate. That, I guess that makes sense, but they're also asking for the density, right? So the density is defined somewhere else in the code, and then they're coming and requesting. But I'm curious why the parking ratios are qualified with upon request by applicant?
Because that's one of the development requirements that they're asking for some sort of relief from. It could also be a setback. It could also be height. It could be parking. It could even be landscaping. And, and, and so those are all things that they may want to do in order to increase the density.
Okay. I see. So I think, so density isn't qualified with the phrase upon request by applicant because that's the assumed reason for the section in the first place. But there's additional reasons that may allow them to achieve that density.
Exactly.
That makes sense. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I do have one other comment through the chair, if that's okay?
You have the floor.
The, the phrase of unobstructed access to a major transit stop comes up multiple times. And I was a little concerned by the phrase unobstructed access. And there's some examples, there is, there's a definition for it, which is 112.1.12.4. But it's, I think it's pretty vague. And so I was just, I'm a little bit concerned that there's a lot of subjectivity there that could potentially prevent an applicant from achieving a project that would work. But we have this very vague sort of unobstructed access definition to a major transit stop. And I was curious maybe where that definition came from? Was that state law, or did county come up with that?
That is state law, and I wouldn't personally call it vague. I would call it broad. It applies a lot in a lot of circumstances, and it allows for a lot.
I think that's what I'm concerned about. So like, meaning it's broad in the sense that anything could be considered, a lot could be considered as obstructing access.
We recently used that in the Washington Street subdivision, and used connectivity to a transit stop. And on the north side of School Road, there are no sidewalks. But we were able to define that they could cross the street on School at the stop sign there, walk down the south side of the street to get to the bus stop. That is unobstructed access. If there were no sidewalks on either side, that would be obstructed access.
Yeah. And I think that occurs frequent, frequently, although less frequently in maybe areas where these types of projects would be seen. I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how could this be a barrier? Because there's a number of projects where they could achieve additional incentives or bonuses that are qualified by this unobstructed access piece. And I guess, I wouldn't want it, I guess where I'm coming from is use, if, if you're putting additional developments in a place, and so the more people are using it, then there's more likely to be development to allow people access to, you know, pedestrian facilities and sidewalks, ADA improvements. In addition, we usually tie improvements to projects. And so there's a little bit of a chicken or egg issue that I'm concerned about if there's, you know, a project may be put in the sidewalk. And so I'm just a little curious if this could be sort of unnecessary and unintended barrier to getting these projects developed.
If I could respond to that, I would simply say that we didn't create anything here. All we're trying to do is come into compliance with state law on this point. This is a state law term. It applies to a lot of things. It applies to CEQA exemptions. It applies to in other places in the planning, zoning, and development law. And, and so I don't know that there's a convenient way to write that out and not be out of compliance.
Or change, or change the definition?
But that is the state's definition.
Got it.
That's not ours.
Got it. Okay.
Appreciate the challenge. The state policies are often kind of a one-size-fits-all-
that don't necessarily fit into some of the rural natures of our county. I understand your concern is to, to want to ensure that we actually have people applying for these density bonus credits, with the understanding that transit improvements that might not be there that day, could, could come either as a part of the project, or, or multiple projects that might be developed along that corridor. I think our planning staff would bend over backwards to try to figure out how to make developments with density bonus credits work in this county, when they have the opportunity to, so, I think, okay.
Appreciate that summary, and, yeah, that makes sense.
I think I understand your point, and it's a good one, it's just, and it is the chicken or the egg, yep, so. Yes?
Just a very minor correction, that 8.1.1.9 is a repeat of 8.1.1.5?
I, I don't believe that's an unnecessary repeat, I, without looking at it immediately, I believe they're modifying separate sections.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Just happens to be in the same way.
Okay, any other discussion on this item, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll move to accept, oops, the draft density bonus ordinance amendments, and updating the zoning ordinance to match state code that regulates how, regulates and allows density bonuses.
I'll second that, and just, I mean, it seems like our hands are tied in quite a bit of it, and reading through it, it just was like, okay, this meets state law, this meets state law, there isn't really much room to kneel it back.
Motion second, any discussion? I think we can do this with a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, okay. Item two, amendments to the commercial cannabis micro-business standards. Director Ford, our staff report, please. Yes?
So just, disclosure, my understanding, this could potentially, if approved, affect two projects that I own, but that is not the majority of the projects in Humboldt County, so I believe I can still partake in this.
That's our understanding, yes.
I'm still Augustus Groshaw, still a planner for Humboldt County Planning, and this one has a bit more freedom for you guys to discuss and modify. The micro-business ZCC bundle ordinance, allowing for more vertical integration of cannabis businesses. Again, let's get some definitions out of the way. Microbusinesses are what I consider a composite use, in that they are defined by the combination of separate uses, and they are not a use in and of themselves. That combination comprises of less than 10,000 square feet of cultivation, distribution, non-volatile manufacturing, and retail sales. And then to get a distinction out of the way, the county permits microbusinesses, and the Department of Cannabis Control, also known as DCC, licenses microbusinesses. So why are we doing this? We had an outpouring of public comments lamenting economic difficulties among cannabis cultivators, notably, a lot, some of those comments referred to overcharging for services and/or not fulfilling contracts. Those third parties include distribution, retail sales, and processing and manufacturing. So the board directed the planning department to assess options, and the planning department determined that we believe that vertical integration potential available in microbusinesses may assuage this issue, if cultivators are able to take advantage of them. So what's actually changing? First, we're adding some new lines to the micro-business code itself, specifically in cases where the highest level of required permit among the proposed uses is a ZCC, the micro-business may be permitted with a ZCC instead of a special permit. We also propose adding an exception for TPZ and floodplain zones, which would typically prohibit microbusinesses, with the requirements that all new cannabis activities are in existing structures, no cannabis is brought in from off-site to manufacture or sell, and no customers visit the site. This is in line with the mitigations of the EIR. We also add a clarification that the ZCC exception does not apply to other situations that would also require micro-business permits, such as like farm-based retail sales of imported We also add the potential for ZCC for a non-viol, volatile extraction facility, if in association with a cultivation permit, without customer traffic, and the manufacturing itself also needs to be compliant with the cultivation site's eligibility and citing criteria, rather than the typical standards that would be, apply to any other manufacturing. Again, this does not allow for applicants to bring cannabis in from off-site and extract from that. Because of this lack of customer traffic, we note that these are exempt, exempt from the paved road requirements. What does this mean for existing cultivators? Essentially, it may be possible to permit manufacturing on your farm, however, modification to your permit would be required. If you're less than 10,000 square feet, it might be possible to call it a micro-business. What's not changing, regardless of whether or not you approve this as is, you can still process and package onsite in a structure with a commercial building permit, and there are exceptions to the, that requirement of a commercial building permit. You can distribute your own product, as long as you've got a cannabis, county cannabis transporter license from the tax collector, and a self-transport distribution license from the DCC, and you can deliver your own product to customers if you get a farm-based retail sales ZCC, and a non-storefront retailer license. To go into why we think this is okay with CEQA, all development that might result from this will still comply with all the mitigations from the commercial cannabis land use ordinance, environmental impact report. Additional key details regarding those mitigations, the no onsite customer traffic requirements we've included, the cannabis grown onsite requirements, and the existing structures-only requirements for TPZ and FP. There is a supplemental that we did not provide to, and we apologize for that, because it was something we found yesterday. We identified a potential interpretive hole in our manufacturing option, in which one could interpret it to say that if you have a TPZ permit, and you wanted to add manufacturing, that wouldn't be requiring a, that wouldn't require an existing structure. We wouldn't interpret it that way by standard, and we wouldn't typically allow that, but just to cover that hole, we're also proposing to add the text, "And if located within an FP or TPZ zone, the permitted manufacturing activities must occur within existing structures", basically right in the center of those other requirements. We got some public comments. One of them started out with saying important steps in the right direction, but also had some gripes with the commercial building standards. Commercial building standards are outside of the purview of the planning code, so we can't really change those, there you are. And to get around those building standards, they suggested an assessment of potentially permitting manufacturing with cottage industry license, in a similar way to the processing allowances we have made. With manufacturing, it might be case by case, more than processing, there's a wide range in means of manufacturing, even when non-volatile. The key elements of the cottage industry standards I'd like to highlight are, shall not require, shall not create noise, odors, smoke, or other nuisances, and shall be no structural, electrical, or plumbing alterations, which are not customarily found in dwellings. And we had another public comment today. Not create a slide for this one. A lot of this particular comment describes the current status quo as if it's proposing something new, but there are some highlighted elements I would like to note. Microbusinesses without onsite customer traffic are already permitted without a CUP, that's the standard. Often, the public accommodations standards are what requires the, forgive me, category four roads. Plus, it requests that processing could be allowed in any ag-exempt building, that's not going to be permitted per building code, that's outside of our realm of change. It requests that new documents not need to be submitted. Again, we do that in the same way already, we just ask for an operations plan addendum in most cases, when you're changing an existing product, project. Plus, requesting that people could be able to transport their own product without a separate license, which, again, this is outside of the planning department's purview, because we manage the use and not the transportation on the roads itself, that will be the jurisdiction of the tax collector, and their licensing, and the state. So, did you have anything else to add, Ed Roden? It also wants microbusinesses to be able to be permitted with an acre of cannabis, but that's beyond the definition of 10,000 square feet of micro-business that we share with the state. So, our recommendation is that we adopt the resolution, which finds that the planning commission has considered the CCLU, CCLU OER as well as the addendum to the EIR, finds that the project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors adopt the amendment with the additional text change to section 55.4.8.2.2.4. This ends my presentation, and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner O'Neill?
Cannabis isn't my area of expertise, so these questions, if that makes sense, you can help me out.
Please, make sure your microphone's on.
It's on.
Okay.
So you have, it has to happen within an existing structure, and I'm wondering why it couldn't be a replacement structure also, so if you were going to go into a new micro-business, and you have a barn there that's not adequate for what you want to do currently, or proposing to do, why couldn't you replace that with something, using the similar footprint, but with improvements to it, so that it better serves your new venture you're going into?
It's absolutely our intended interpretation to allow for retrofitting and updates to structures. What we care about is the footprint, and if you're completely demolishing it and building it in the same footprint, that will still be an existing structure per, because it existed before 2016.
You just couldn't increase the square footage?
Exactly.
Okay. The other thought that I had was about no importing cannabis, so why couldn't you have like a co-op of, say, five people, and only, you know, that they could bring their cannabis to this new micro-business, that would discourage having five micro-businesses, if only one of them was the micro-business, and I, I'm not really following why you can't bring cannabis from another site.
I would describe that as a limitation by the EIR. We wouldn't necessarily prevent that from happening, but the roads need to be up to snuff, and potentially you might need a special permit.
But is that incorporated into this new ordinance, that interpretation?
We're not changing that, that's not a change, that's what we, that's the standard.
But when you say no imported into this, doesn't that preclude you from being able to do that?
It's an addition, no imported applies to the new things. We're not saying, any micro-business can't use imported cannabis, that, for microbusinesses, that only applies to TPZ and FP, and it might apply to when the roads are bad, I would need to reread.
If I could add to that a little bit, the objective of these changes was to allow individual cultivators to vertically, vertically integrate, so to do more with the business that's going on on their own property. There's still provisions within the ordinance to allow just what you're talking about, just not with an administrative, ministerial approval.
I see, okay.
Thank you, John.
Can, can you clarify, does this cover both volatile and non-volatile manufacturing? Is it just non-volatile?
It is exclusively non-volatile, you can't do volatile with, in the zones that aren't designated.
Yep.
Oh yeah, or with a micro-business, micro-businesses are specific as well.
Commissioner Mulder, have a question?
I'm going to wait till after public comment, when we get into the discussion part.
Let's see, are there questions? All open is for public comment, anybody that wants to address the commission on this, on this topic, please approach the podium, and if you're online, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. And you'll have three minutes.
Great. Good evening, Commissioner's staff. Ross Gordon, on behalf of Humboldt County Growers Alliance, sent all a letter that staff referenced prior to this meeting. First, just want to really appreciate staff for bringing this item forward, and taking some time to look into this. This is a really significant issue for farmers here, I don't think it's, you know, a secret that wholesale prices have totally collapsed for farmers, trying to compete with an undifferentiated product is not working. What is working for people is selling a craft, high-quality product that they're putting something extra into, and being able to bring these types of value-added activities on farm, vertical integration, as staff put it, is really central to that. And so I, I think taking this seriously is really important, and if we can get to a place where those uses become significantly more accessible, I think it's going to be good, not just for individual farmers able to do that, I think it's really going to support the county, and being able to support a craft cannabis industry that can succeed despite the problems in the market. So really appreciate the discussion on this. We also support the ordinance as it's worded, don't have any issue with the, the clarification that was discussed here today either. You know, as we put in our letter, we think it's a step in the right direction, I think it's fair, from our perspective, to call it an incremental improvement, a meaningful improvement. And I think the main challenge, and there's, there's maybe a few, but I think the biggest is, as was referenced, commercial building code, and understand that there are parameters and limitations around that, and that it's not necessarily a, a planning code question. So appreciate that maybe there's some interest on a, you know, case-by-case basis, looking at whether enough one occupancy is required, because I'd say that is the biggest barrier practically that most farmers are facing when they're, they're looking at doing this. All that said, I think, you know, expanding the options for a zoning clearance certificate is definitely helpful, and some of the other streamlining in this proposal would be helpful as well, so definitely support this proposal, and hope you move it forward today. Thank you.
I don't see any hands up online, no? Is there anybody else in the room that wants to address this, this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioner Mulder?
So, through the chair to staff, yes, I would have to reduce my cultivation area technically to So, through the chair to staff, yes, I would have to reduce my cultivation area technically to, for what's proposed, but I did also reference the letter, and there is flexibility, one way or another. I, everyone I'm talking to, you know, they hang on that commercial building standard. And the way I'm reading this, and I could be wrong, that the manufacturing activities have to happen in a commercial building, but on, you're also in the same breath saying that the building has to meet commercial standards but and be in an existing building on TPZ. Lots of farmers in the rural areas have ag buildings that can't necessarily be brought up to commercial standards. So, what would someone do in that aspect?
This will tie into Commissioner O'Neill's question. We can absolutely update our proposal and your recommendation to, say, or foot, within the footprint of existing structures so that it's clear that you can update a structure and bring it up to code.
But I guess where I was going is, say, for example, you, let's just throw out a hypothetical 400-square-foot building. There's no way to bring it up to code. Is there a way to change the use of that 400-square-foot structure to a different residential type use possibly? And then have a new 400-square-foot commercial without impacting the footprint for the cannabis operations?
I think that we're walking a fine line here because fundamentally in the floodplain and in TPZ, cannabis is not allowed use other than as a non-conforming activity. So, we can't allow an expansion of the use or the footprint. And, and, and so, that's why it's really critical to keep it within existing buildings. And, and one of the things that I think Mr. Greshaw mentioned was, you know, the relevance of the cottage industry standard, which would allow some things to be done within a residence provided they comply with that cottage industry requirement.
Good. I'm just trying to bring up a couple of things that may be roadblocks and there may be, without, that's why I was saying there might be a building that's right next to a house that someone could change to a residential use. And then the ag use, it would have to be a case-by-case, obviously, but I'm just trying to, of some of the people I've talked to, some of the challenges or potential roadblocks people may run into. And then, obviously, the building cost of a commercial building versus an ag building is, you can, you know the numbers there.
So, we totally get that part of the struggle for many people, if not most, is that you can't make requirements that are so expensive to comply with that it doesn't make economic sense to do it. And that's why particularly for the small farmer, we've traditionally tried to balance the fact that a lot of these folks are, are homesteaders that have a house on the property, and there is an integration of their farm with the house. And, and that's, that's probably the most effective way of complying with this.
Okay. So, I hear Staff is willing to work with individuals, case by case, to try to find a pathway forward?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Other questioners, questions? Commissioners?
Well, I guess I would just, you know, I appreciate that question and answer because it does seem that building codes in general are a pretty big economic obstacle for this type of vertical integration. We're, of course, just recommending this to the supervisors for approval, if we do. Would they presumably have broader jurisdiction to make ancillary changes to other sections of code if the case could be clearly made that it would truly help achieve the goals outlined here to do so?
Well, I'll jump in to that one.
I'll start with, commercial building standards are state code. So, even then, they don't have significant authority.
That's clarifying, yes. Right. Okay.
If you have more to add, John?
No, that's where I was going to go.
Okay.
I mean, you, you could ask them to not adopt certain portions of the California Building Code, but that is a little bit, that's really dangerous.
Got it. Okay. So, no, no, that is clarifying. I wasn't totally sure to what extent that was true, that, once again, we sort of run up against state requirements for some of the real harder issues to solve here. Okay?
Yes. Commissioner Mulder?
So, just very interesting, building code is running into a challenge for affordable housing in businesses. That's what I'm hearing, so. Well, is there any more discussion, or are we ready to make a motion? Okay. Well, I don't know if I, well. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution that finds the Planning Commission is considered the environmental impact report previously adopted for the commercial land use ordinance as well as the addendum to the EIR that was prepared for the amendments to microbusiness standards, projects pursuant to section 15164 of the CEQA guidelines, and find the proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance and recommends the Board of Supervisors adopt the amendments to the commercial land use ordinance.
I'll second that.
Clarification on the motion?
That did include the modification that was proposed earlier, that it has to be within the existing footprint.
Yes, yes, that, the little, the discussion we had, the Staff's interpretation of what would meet CEQA guidelines.
The highlighted section, is that what we're referring to?
In the floodplain and TPZ zones only.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Mulder in a second, from Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. We have one more item on the agenda. I'm going to propose we take a break right now. Come back at, do we need 10 minutes? Okay. 7:07. 7:07 it is. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order and take up the McKinleville Town Center zoning amendment ordinance. Director Ford, for Staff Report, please.
Thank you, Chair Scabdal. John Ford with the Planning and Building Department to present the McKinleville Town Center ordinance. And I will apologize in advance for what will probably be a long presentation. And, but I will not go through the things that you've already seen in the workshop. If I could have the screen, please. So, I'm just going to dive right in and just remind you, this is the outline of where the town center is at. This is a requirement of the McKinleville Community Plan. And it's envisioned, there is a project that's already envisioned within the town center area. That's the Life Plan Humboldt Project. It's changed its name that I haven't quite got my head wrapped around yet, but I'm sure you'll hear about that tonight. And the town center ordinance does accommodate for this project. The critical parts of what the action is, is first, is to rezone this entire area to mixed use. There is an existing zone within the zoning ordinance called mixed use. And so, that will be the underlying zone for this entire area. Over the top of that will be a Q-zone overlay. The Q-zone overlay then refers to three different zones that also exist within the ordinance. One is the streamside management area and other wetlands. That's denoted as the wetlands there on the, what is my left. Then, public facility and the R3. Probably a lot of questions come up, why are you keeping the R3 and not just making that a, an MU, mixed use, like the rest of it? And the reason for that is, that is currently a mobile home park. And mobile home parks were not an allowed use within the mixed use provisions that were created as part of the overlay zone. And so, did not want to result in that becoming a non-conforming use. So, the Planning Commission at the workshop looked at the community plan policies that were guiding the development of the town center ordinance, looked at the design standards that were part of that, gave an overview of the ordinance's development relative to the different major categories. And at the time of the workshop, the McKinleville Municipal Advisory Committee had not finished their review yet. They did finish their review two weeks ago, and they recommended approval of the draft ordinance and the EIR with a 6-0 vote. So, I want to go through just some of the EIR factors really quick. Just, you know the terminology of the significance of impacts. Less than significant, less than significant with mitigation, or significant unavoidable. These are the areas that were evaluated. All of them were found to be less than significant except for the noise impacts along Railroad Avenue. And I'll go into that in just a moment. And that is because what, the traffic noise along Railroad increased by seven decibels. It's still less than the 60 decibels, which would be allowed within a residential setting, according to the general plan. But the EIR set a threshold of an increase of five decibels as a threshold for a determination of significance. There was no feasible mitigation for that, partly because the road is already at a 25 mile an hour speed limit and because, and the houses that exist on the road face the road, and so, it really wasn't feasible to put up a sound wall or something like that along the road. There is mitigation for air quality, both for construction impacts and also operational impacts. There are biological mitigation measures related to special status plant species and listed species. And one of the, the big concerns was the Western Bumblebee. CDFW actually submitted a letter with some recommendations on that. We addressed their concerns, and that'll come up in a moment. But also included mitigation for potential impacts to wetlands. And there's mitigation for other special plant communities. There is mitigation related to greenhouse gas emissions that largely related to all-electric construction and installing electric vehicle support infrastructure. The noise impacts were related to construction noise, and there was mitigation for that. There was also concern with developing residential units out along Central Avenue due to the noise there. And future construction will need to comply with the performance standards that are contained within that, those mitigation measures. From a traffic impact standpoint, CEQA, as you know, converted to vehicle miles traveled. The project is somewhat self-mitigating just because it is pedestrian-bicycle transit-oriented. And so, the impact there was deemed to be less than significant. The central lane, lane reduction, a lot of people commented on that, but that's not really something that was related to the EIR. We also had a separate operational analysis done that was an appendix to the EIR showing the changes in level of service as a result of the lane reduction. That those changes or improvements that are recommended within that level of service analysis are not included as part of this project. So, the EIR identified alternatives. One was the no-project alternative, and that would just allow the retention of the existing land use and zoning. Or the second was a reduced project scale alternative. And what that would do is limit what the EIR evaluated in terms of the number of units, retail area, and office that could be allowed. The alternative two is the environmentally preferred alternative. The MCMAC and their deliberation on the EIR and on the alternatives found that the project was better just simply related to the, the need to provide housing and to provide a scale at which the retail and office portions of the project would be supported. So, received 28 letters on the DEIR. One was from a state agency, one was from a local agency, one was from a nongovernmental organization. Received two letters from affected property owners. Put together all the comments given at the April 23rd MCMAC meeting, and then 22 letters from individuals. Many of the comments on the EIR were related to the ordinance. A lot of them focused on the amount of development, the town center design, a desire for more open space, wetlands, pedestrian connections. One person even said that they really wanted to see an Italian piazza. Some comments related to Central Avenue and the proposed road diet there, and others were concerned with the lack of community input. Those were not comments on the EIR itself, but rather on the, the project, on the town center ordinance. Some comments did result in a need to provide corrections, and those were reflected in the FEIR, and I'll go into that in just a minute. So, the CDFW made comments on the Western Bumblebee. They made comments on the, the wetland mitigation and, and really pointed to what was in the Q-zone already and said that that was better mitigation than what was in the EIR. The, there was disagreement with the VMT analysis, and there was conflicting comments on the level of service recommendations. Comments said that these cannot be treated as mitigation measures, while other comments were that they needed to be supported by a financing plan so that they could be implemented. So, in terms of the FEIR, the FEIR really has three components to it. One is responding to the comments, another is changes to the IR, and then the DEIR is part of the FEIR. So, those are the three major components. You'll see in the FEIR that what is done is the comments are bracketed, and then on a following page, the comment is summarized, and then a response is given to it. There were three different master responses. Master responses are used when there are a lot of comments on the same subject. So, rather than providing the same comment over and over again, it's just referred to the master comment. And some of the comments really focused on the ordinance requirements or on the Central Avenue modifications. Some comments did result in a change. So, we all, in terms of changes to the DEIR, we did modify the project description where the cross-section had not been updated. It was adequately described in the project description, but the, the exhibit was slightly different. And that has since changed by the action of the MCMAC, and I'll, I'll- And that has since changed by the action of the MCMAC, and I'll, I'll point that out in just a moment. We did add a monitoring component to the air quality mitigation measure five dash four. We did provide alternatives for addressing the western bumblebee, and that had three different options associated with it. We made a modification to the nesting season for migratory bird and, and raptor nesting seasons. As I mentioned, we modified the wetlands to conform to the town center language. And then for the construction noise, we added a construction noise coordinator. And we corrected the numbers within the reduced project alternative. So the areas of concern that have continued to be a concern relate to wetlands, Central Avenue, the amount of development analyzed, and open space. So, the first thing I'm going to get into is compliance with the McHenryville Community Plan. And this seems to really center on four to five different policies. There are two kind of parallel policies. Policy fourteen is the first one, and you can see there, it says, "On existing parcels, development within wetland areas shall be permitted." And it goes on to say that you've got to mitigate the effects, and, you know, you, you, well, full, you've got to fully offset any adverse effects. And so that's on properties that are, have been existing. So what is an existing parcel? Existing or new has to be understood from the context of the community plan. There are five, four, sorry, five undeveloped parcels currently on, in the town center. Four of those are, have existed since before the town center was adopted. They're shown here. The one is a parcel that actually includes the McHenryville Shopping Center. That is one parcel that, that goes way, way back. The other location for basically undeveloped or underdeveloped parcels are along Picket Road. If you can see my cursor moving over there, there's three parcels there. And those have remained unchanged since before the community plan was adopted, and so they would be subject to policy fourteen. Development could occur within wetlands, provided that it was fully mitigated for. And the important thing to understand here is that mitigation comes as part of the project. Contemplating a project does not mean that now it falls under a different policy guidance. So until a new parcel's created, the contemplation of a subdivision, the mitigation for wetlands or the development around wetlands as part of a subdivision would fall under policy fourteen. Then there is policy fifteen, which is written in an interesting way. It says, "No land use or development shall be permitted in wetland areas which degrade the wetland or detract from the natural resource value on newly created parcels." There's only one parcel in the town center that this applies to, and that is the Life Plan Humboldt parcel. So what does this mean? Does this mean that you cannot touch a wetland on a newly created parcel? If the language was simply as is in white up there, "No land use or development shall be permitted in wetland areas on newly created parcels," that would be clear. It just wouldn't be allowed. But it doesn't say that. It says, "Which degrade the wetland or detract from the natural resource value." And so the, the thing that is clear about policy fifteen is it absolutely sets a higher threshold than policy fourteen. Then the interesting thing to start to think about is that when you, there's parallel policies that use the same language, they can't mean different things. And in this particular case, there is a policy nineteen, and it's related to allowing development within wetland buffers, that uses the exact same language as policy fifteen, except it's related to a wetland buffer. The irony here, though, is that policy eighteen allows development within the buffers. So the critical language is, "Does not degrade the wetland or detract from the natural resource value." So those are the things that have to be interpreted in understanding whether or not any additional development could occur, or whether or not there is the ability to restore or recreate wetlands under policy fifteen. And what we have found is that, given the fact that there is this performance criteria, and this is, I've gone into far greater detail in the staff report on this, to evaluate what does it mean to degrade a wetland or detract from the natural resource value, we do find that it is possible to do wetland restoration, wetland recreation on a parcel. You can't move it off-site, you can't lose value on the property, but as long as you're doing restoration, recreation on the site, that is allowable and consistent with the McHenryville Community Plan. So moving on to the next area of concern, which is Central Avenue. This is the cross-section that was approved by the MCMAC. This has been modified. What this has is three lanes, through North Lane, through South Lane, Center Turn Lane. What was shown in the EIR is where you see the curbs, and on the right, you see the, the red planter with a, a small tree in it. Those originally had trees as were shown on the outside planters. And what the MCMAC attempted to do was take into account the fact that there are utilities within Central Avenue that could be impacted by the, the landscape planter, if there was a need to modify or work on those utilities. There is a, a water line that would go basically under this bike trail right here. And then there is also a storm drain line that is right over here fairly close to that planter. The rest of it is within the cross-section of the street. The community is concerned that when there is a need to work on these facilities, that there is a need to potentially close off traffic. And there's also a concern that the two, reduction to two lanes, or three lanes instead of five lanes would adversely affect emergency response. The, what we've tried to do, and what the MCMAC tried to do by taking the landscaping out, is to take out any conflict with the underground utilities, and the Center Turn Lane was modified to remove a landscape planter so that that is completely open, which allows emergency vehicles to go up and down the, the center of the street. The alternatives that were presented to the MCMAC for consideration were things that were done as part of the McHenryville Multimodal Study. One was proposed alternative one, which maintained the five lanes, basically kept everything within the same right-of-way, but then put a ten-foot bike path over on the west side of the road. One of the concerns that was expressed by the MCMAC with this is that you see on the right side over here is, I know it's hard to read, I apologize for that, but it says five-foot bike, bridle trail. This area is intended to comply with the street cross-sections, and I can go into those for the Form-Based Code. Having a bridle trail right there really is not entirely consistent with that, so that was one of the reasons that they went with the, what was called alternative three at the time, which is what I showed you on the previous slide. The other consideration was below that, that's alternative two. That's also a three-lane alternative, and that has buffered bicycle trails on it. Those were not recommended for approval by the, the MCMAC, the previous slide was. So the other area of concern was the amount of impact analysis that we did. And the, the number that people get really concerned with was the addition of twenty-six hundred and fifty units. And, and so I, I started looking at this myself. And so, we assumed that there'd be, the ability to average about twenty-five dwellings to the acre with four-story buildings. Commercial on the first floor, three floors of residential. The, the other consideration there is that there's not an onsite parking requirement, and, and so that would alleviate area that would typically be used for parking. And so if you divide twenty-six fifty by twenty-five, you, you get a hundred and six acres. The town center itself is approximately a hundred and thirty-four acres. And there are approximately fifty-four acres that are undeveloped. And that includes the thirty-five acres that is on what is commonly called the Pearson Property, and that includes the lawn area that's right there off Hiller and the pad that's out in front on Central. And then there's the three parcels that are over off Picket. There's about four-point-three acres there, and the Life Plan Humboldt parcel is four-point, fourteen-point-two acres is what I came up with today, but I, I think others are assuming it's fifteen acres. But if you multiplied fifty-four acres by one thousand, by twenty-five units to the acre, that gives you one thousand three hundred and fifty units. And then just for a reality check, Life Plan Humboldt is coming in at a hundred and forty-four acres is the last number I saw, and that would be about two hundred and eleven units under the twenty-five units per acre. The Picket Road has asked for a provision to do something at about ten units to the acre, that'd be about forty-three acres, which is about sixty-four units under what would be considered at twenty-five units to the acre. So what we're seeing is, is that it's not developing at that level, and the EIR may have evaluated that number of units, but that's not the number of units that are guaranteed in the zone. The development ability is dictated by the Form-Based Code contained within the ordinance The other, one of the other concerns is that of open space, and the MCMAC revisited this at their last meeting, and the ordinance currently requires that three percent of the undeveloped property, which as I just mentioned is fifty-four acres, be dedicated to open space, with one of the sites being a minimum of twenty thousand square feet. So these can be combined into one area or spread across the different properties. At fifty acres, just to use a round number, that would equal one-point-five acres of open space. The MCMAC was split. Some wanted a greater than twenty thousand square feet, others were fine with the number where it was. I do just want to remind, while there's a split on that, they still did all vote in favor of recommending the ordinance in its current form to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. The other open space concerned is with parkland dedication, and the McHenryville Community Plan, I paraphrase this a little bit, I didn't change any meaning, but just to get it on the slide, and I'm sorry there's so much verbiage on this slide, but basically, community parkland, three acres per thousand, and neighborhood mini-parks at two acres per one thousand. And, and then what some really wanted to see was that all this be dedicated now as part of the town center. But what has traditionally been done as part of the McHenryville community area is that a park fee is paid, and that is consistent with the policy four-three-two-two. And so that is what would be done here, is new development, new residential units coming in would be required to pay a park fee. And when MCSD chooses to either develop or approve parks, that money is available for their use to develop parkland in McHenryville. The other concern that's been expressed is that what the Form-Based Code has done, especially with the four-story height, does not follow the town center vision for a traditional village. And the actual language is that the guidelines will help create a basis for building, siting to assure a traditional village form and to avoid the standard strip shopping center look. So, part of the question is, is traditional village intended to be interpreted literally? Or is it intended to be a contrast to not having a strip shopping center? I, I Googled traditional villages within the United States, and what I came up with, or what Google came up with, was Colonial Williamsburg in Virginia, St. Augustine, Florida, Herman, Missouri, Galena, Kansas, and the thing that all of these have in common is that they are historic areas. They are developed well before our, our current development sensibilities. So I would present to you that really what the traditional village reference is intended to address is wanting to move away from the strip shopping center design where it's parking out in front of the building, where it's really oriented to a pre-automobile kind of environment, where pedestrian, open spaces, walkways are an integral part of the town center, and that really is what the community plan calls for. So since we sent out this agenda, in the last six days, we received seventy-three comments. And most of them are either in support of or oppose the so-called road diet. Thirty-one of them just were flat no on the road diet. Six of them only really addressed supporting the road diet. Many of them supported, or thirty-three supported both the community, or the town center ordinance and the road diet. And then there were three letters that just addressed other concerns with the town center ordinance. So it is a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution certifying the EIR, and adopt findings of overriding consideration. To adopt, recommend adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt the resolution to make all the required findings, and adopt the ordinance to rezone the town center mixed use with the Q-zone overlay with the establishment of development criteria. I can walk through the ordinance at this point, or I can take questions.
Do you have a question at this point?
Yeah. So, my biggest hurdle here to overcome is the road diet, because I looked at both pros and cons, and I'm wondering if you can't include a requirement that a more detailed transportation plan be conducted before any changes would occur? Because those merging and unmerging along Central could create impacts that are beyond the Q-zone. You have to have merge lanes, and I don't know where they're going to start and end. I'd like to see a study, and I realize there is no money to do any of this right now, but at the time or prior to making changes, that they could have a more detailed study, they could even do a test period where they shut down lanes and see what the impacts are going to be. But you're, you're bringing in additional residents, and I don't know what, I drive down that road and I try to envision, you know, and it, sometimes it seems like, you know, three lanes is going to be sufficient, other times when people are going to school or going to work in the morning, it's, it's pretty crowded, and that And that's without the additional units. So, and also that what they create doesn't create other safety hazards, you know, like planters, that people like to run into anything that's there. So that's the only thing that, because I'm on the fence. I don't know if it would be an improvement. I know that this is going to cost several million dollars to do these improvements. And the whole Central Avenue needs improvements beyond just the Q-zone. I mean, if we want people to walk to the, this area from outside of the Q-zone, it might, it might work fine for people that live within that zone in these new homes. But if you're walking to that site, which I have been doing just to see what the pros and cons are, there's a lot of other areas on Central Avenue that need improvement. And that's not on the, you know, what we're talking about today. But this potentially could attract people to come from those areas. So it is an impact that's created by, you know, adding more commercial and residential transit, what have you, to that area. So, you know, I'm putting a plug in, I guess, for public works since, you know, we don't control the road money in McKinleyville, that more thought be put into improving all of Central. We don't have sidewalks on both sides. We don't have bike lanes through the whole Central. McKinleyville Avenue needs improvements, but, and those are both areas that would be feeding into this Q-zone. So that's my biggest thing is, I don't know if it's going to be that negative of an impact, but I haven't seen anything more concentrated on studying it. And I'd like to see that added as a requirement prior, and it might be five, 10 years down the road before they ever get to this. It's, it's not, I don't know where the funding's going to come from, so. But if you've already approved it, I guess this, I'm leading to my question. If it's already been approved, unless say they get federal funding to do the improvements, and, and they always have to do an environmental, when they get federal funding or state funding, at that time, do they just say, there is no impact because we've already approved it? Or do they have to look at the environmental impacts at that time?
Obviously, the environmental effects need to be evaluated at that time.
At the time that they receive the funding?
Yeah, well, before that.
Before that.
So you, you know very well, the first thing that there needs to be is a vision of what you want to accomplish. Then there, there needs to be acquisition of funding in order to design a project. Then there needs to be acquisition of funding to actually build the project. So this is the, kind of the first phase in that. Obviously, the second phase would involve an awful lot of engineering work, an awful lot of testing to make sure that that's the right design. And then evaluating that from an environmental impact standpoint and a NEPA standpoint, if there's federal funding involved, to identify any potential environmental effects.
So are these all separate projects? So let's say you want to do the first project, which is build the senior village. It's not required that they do the road diet to do that project?
That is absolutely correct.
They don't have to fund it or put it into their budget?
Correct. In fact, one of the things I should probably, we should probably walk through the ordinance. Because one of the things that the Central Avenue road diet is very clear on is that development, it says along Central, but it really is intended to be within the entire town center, is not responsible for installing that. That's got to be funded completely separately. And so this is really about, you know, addressing some primary concerns that the community plan brought up, which is number one, Central Avenue poses a significant impediment to pedestrians and bicycles between the east and west side of Central Avenue. And so by slowing traffic through there, it makes a safer environment for bicycles and for pedestrians. That, that is, you know, part of the, the important consideration. The other part that I, I was trying to go fast so I didn't spend two and a half hours on the presentation. But the other part that's really important is that, you know, what defines McKinleyville, what defines the town center? It's unusual to have a five-lane arterial ripping through an, an area that you want to be your area of coming together, of the community joining. And, and so the, the idea there is that modifying Central also establishes a sense of place. Yes, it's, it's not a, a road to get from point A to point B. It becomes more of a destination. And, and, and so I, I think those are important considerations. Yes, safety is an absolute consideration. And the engineers who would work on the road diet, no matter what it looks like, or modifications to Central, no matter what it looks like, are going to take safety into account. They, they, they have to. This is not something that will be done haphazardly.
So John, just to build on that a little bit, because I think there's a little bit of confusion around the difference, what's covered in the EIR, and the kind of programmatic nature of the EIR for the plan. The fact that the EIR does include an appendix, that is, the W-trans traffic study that talks about some improvements and different things, but then we say, that's not the subject of the EIR.
Yeah.
So a little bit of confusion about that. When we approve the EIR, if we do, and we forward that forward, we're not technically, it doesn't include, or it's not evaluating the impacts of the, of the Central Avenue reconstruction?
It, it could, but there may be other things that need to be considered that the EIR didn't grapple with.
Right.
Because it couldn't have known.
So that would be a supplemental EIR in the future that would come off of this document?
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Yes.
Would now be a good time to ask a couple of questions, more on the EIR part, the first part of your presentation.
Sure.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I heard, the first one is, we've got multiple public comments about natural resources. And from what I heard from your report, between the multiple rules there, as long as it doesn't lose a natural resource value, that is, the wetlands can be moved or mitigated. And I guess to piggyback on it, my understanding is, if a wetland is, meets mitigation measures, that is not losing the natural resource value. Is that still correct?
I would phrase it a little bit differently. I think Policy 15 goes a little deeper than just mitigating for the wetlands.
Okay.
Because when it talks about natural resource values, it's starting to think about, what's the aesthetic value of, of, of the wetland being there? What is the value of the potential sense of plant communities? Are the plant communities there? Can you relocate those successfully? Or are those something that you really, you shouldn't touch? Does it provide habitat to other species? And, and so the natural resource value, I would say, is, is kind of a broader consideration to just the wetland degradation.
Okay. But I guess where I was going with is, the way I understood your report is, the wetlands could be mitigated and moved, and it wouldn't be a degradation to the natural resource value?
Under Policy 15, they could, that could be done onsite, yes.
Okay. That's, that's the way, I guess, sorry, I didn't do very good on my question there. And then the other part, or one of them, is as far as maximum density of the 54 undeveloped acres, I think you said a number of 1,350 would be the max buildable units instead of the 2,600 that was thrown out there as a number. Did I hear you correctly on that?
Yes, that's just for the undeveloped portion. Obviously, the EIR evaluated the potential for other areas to redevelop, which would be good.
Hmm. But it'd be very challenging to right off the bat, get 2,600 units there. There'd be, have to be stuff torn down and stuff like that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So are you, you suggesting we go through the ordinance?
I, I, I think so.
Okay.
Happy to answer any more questions, though.
Need a question? Okay.
Yep. A quick question. Did you, just to clarify, did the McMac on Central propose to remove the physical barrier between the roadway lanes and the bike lane? So it would be buffered, but there's no barrier?
No, they actually were intentional about keeping that curb in place. So.
There's still a physical barrier, there's not deep landscaping, right?
Right.
Got it. Between the road lane and the bicycle?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Director Ford, then.
Thank you. Let me pull up the ordinance. Okay, so the McMac hasn't seen this part before. This is all the usual sections in terms of describing what we're doing. But then it begins at 4.1. And it's identifying that it's the, creating specific standards. And on the map, and I'll show you the map, and, well, you've seen the map. But it identifies that within the Q-zone, the, where it's identified R3, that refers back to the R3 zone, where it identifies public facility, that goes back to the public facilities. And then where it's identified as streamside management area or wetlands, that goes back to that subsection in the zoning ordinance. And then the next section goes to the uses and the design components that are allowed within the MU portion of the Q-zone. I have a quick, oh, this is the wrong version. I apologize.
I also have a quick process question. Or can we ask questions, or is it okay to ask questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Try not to make it take too long, but.
Okay. So one of the things that originally, there were several different use types in here. The McMac asked that it be just reduced to two different types, which is be residential use types and non-residential use types. And a couple really important things here is multifamily residential. There's a couple footnotes there that I'll go down and address. And non-residential use types, there's footnotes there that I'll go down and, and address at the bottom. I don't want to go through this too fast, but. So the notes here on, on number one, carries forward the community plan prohibition on big box department stores. And it does not include filling stations, auto repair, or anything that requires outdoor storage. And then if there's any kind of, you know, production, art production, something like that, there's got to be a gallery or sales of crafts or products that are on site. And then the parcel surrounded by railroad, the wetland parcel north of Hiller, can have up to 25% devoted to multifamily residential without a commercial component. So that's that piece behind Safeway, that 25% of that can be pure residential. And then this is a rather late request. The three parcels on Pickett Road can have less than the 16 units per acre, but must have a minimum of eight units per acre. So there can be a slightly different housing type over on the north side of Pickett Road across from the park. And then the McMac and the public were also concerned about non-compatible use, uses coming in. So the six was added, that use is not consistent with the objectives of the town center, serving the, the community or not permitted, data centers, warehouses, et cetera. So that, that was something that was kind of a late add. Then this, you've seen the, the map before. And then we get into some of the, the lot size development standards.
Have a quick question on that table.
Sure.
In the, the workshop draft, there was a, an additional row at the bottom for mixed use percentage. And it was, it talked about a minimum of 35% of development devoted to commercial use. And I was curious.
The McMac didn't feel like that was necessary to have that in, so it was removed. That was something that staff was proposing, and that, that was not carried forward. And then we get into the Form Based Code standards. And the Form Based Code, you'll see there are examples, and they're based, what's allowed based upon the street type, street type 1, 2, and 3. And, and so, like the porch projecting or engaged, there, that is not allowed in street type 1 or street type 2, but is allowed in street type 3. And so you go through and it identifies, you know, what can happen on the various roadways. Street type 1, as I'll show in a minute, is one of the more, is the, are the busier streets, the primary roads. Street type 2 or secondary and street type 3 are more of the residential roads. And I apologize that the table got chopped up when we redid the, the ordinance, to put it in ordinance form. So that'll be something I need to fix. So I should point that out, that the maximum building height on street type 1 is four stories. And on 2 and 3, it's three stories for 2 and 35 feet along 3.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah?
What is the fire department equipped right now to be able to, with their trucks? How many stories? Do you know?
I have talked to them about that. I did not get feedback that this was not acceptable.
So who would be responsible for upgrading their trucks if they don't go for stories?
So one of the things that is worked into the McKinleyville Community Plan is the, actually, it's more than the plan. It's in county code, is that the fire department can exact a fee to upgrade fire facilities as part of?
To the developer?
So there's design standards there relative to how much of the wall needs to be transparent and not wanting to see blank wall spaces. This again to address blank wall spaces, landscape planners, trellises, murals. Then this is the Then this is the map that shows the different street types. So, street type one, obviously a central, Hiller, and then basically Nursery Road, and then the, I don't know what it's called, as it wraps around behind Safeway. City Center, I think, goes through the middle of, of. But then street type two are some of the feeder roads that come off that, and then street type three would be the western portion of Hiller, McKinleyville, and railroad. So one of the important components is connectivity. And talks about not only auto, but bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. The one-road extension is the Hiller, or I'm sorry, the Nursery Way extension to Hiller. But then my, the map three, which I'm going to get to in a minute, shows the bicycle connections. And one of the things that the, the plan does is it provides north-south and east-west bicycle pedestrian connections. The intent is that the east-west connection, particularly through what's referred to as the Pearson parcel, would really be kind of the backbone of the circulation network for the town center, and that would be pedestrian oriented. Wanted to just pause here for a moment, before I got to the map, and point out that there is a requirement for an enhanced transit facility located with convenient access to Central Avenue, providing simultaneous loading space for multiple buses, bike lockers, and if grant or other funding is available, space for a park-and-ride. And the requirement is this be constructed and operational before 50% of the buildable town center is developed. So the idea here is to really place an emphasis on a community that has tremendous access to bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit.
And whom pays for that?
You know, that is something that will probably be a combination of funds, it could be something that comes out of development, the developers, it could be something that we look for grant funding to have that implemented, perhaps even earlier than would otherwise be done. That is something that we're going to start a conversation on really soon, and start looking at funding, and that would be one of the primary things to look at in terms of providing an amenity to the community is that kind of a transit facility. Here are the. Bicycle pedestrian trails. You can see that there are existing class two trails out on Central. And then the proposed class one and class two trails, the north-south trail is the mid-town trail. There is a connection that comes through right here. And while this is intended to be representative of how it could look, it's not intended to be precise, because it can fluctuate a little bit with development. But it would be the objective to connect both the north and the south and the east and the west, including across Central over into Pearson Park, as part of these pedestrian connections. Then this is the Central Avenue cross-section that I showed you earlier. There's also a cross-section for proposed Hiller Avenue. And you can see here that this looks a little different, it does have a really enhanced bike trail on the north side, has pedestrian. Access along the buildings on the north side, has landscaping in the center median with the ability to have turnouts, that was one of the things the fire district really was concerned about, is that if they need to make a left to get into a site, they needed, they need to make that left. So, the center median will be designed to ensure that there is fire access. The pedestrian access on the south side would be an eight-foot wide sidewalk. There's standards for landscaping along the thoroughfares, there's site design standards, including, you know, design review and what needs to be submitted in order to have these things reviewed. Requirements for the architectural drawings, and if somebody wants to deviate from the provisions of the Q zone, that could only be done through a conditional use permit. You see there, under the parking plan, there is no minimum off-street parking requirement for non-residential development within the town center. Where parking is desired, parking shall be in a common parking lot established and maintained through the formation of a parking district or private parking lot. There can be a maximum number of parking spaces for residential, and that is one space for each residential unit. There are requirements for bicycle parking for commercial and mixed use. And there's a reduction. In the number of off-street vehicle parking spaces with the addition of, actually, that probably needs to be modified at this point, because we eliminated the requirement for on-site parking. So, there's the bicycle parking and then parking lot design and landscape requirements where there is, where there are parking spaces provided. Site landscaping requirements. Then it gets into public open spaces, and this is the paragraph that I talked about before, where there's a minimum 3% of the developable area but undeveloped, devoted to open space with a minimum of 20,000 square feet shall be provided in one, in a common open space area, could be bigger than that. There's requirements for lighting, and this may be a little different than the lighting ordinance that was just adopted. So there's some requirements there for trash enclosures, for rooftop mechanical equipment, odors, dust and smoke, vibration. And then protection, conservation of wetland areas. Just, you know, the, a lot of the mitigation is normal. Wherever the wetlands are recreated or protected, they do need to have a conservation easement or dedication. Associated with them. And then the spruce grove that's in the middle of the site there, half of that needs to be contained within the area that is allowed for wetland mitigation, and then there's a clump of redwood trees that are also to be protected. And then there's a list of approved, approved planning list. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Director Ford. Commissioner Kurzweil.
So just clarifying a bit more regarding road design, that the designs proposed in here, they can change during the design phase of those roads and the engineering of those roads, is that correct?
I would say this is a conceptual design, but they need to be perfected during the engineering design phase, yes.
So for example, like, lane widths or buffer widths or things of those nature, can those change during the design?
Not arbitrarily. I mean, if there's some valid engineering reason that what's shown can't be carried out, obviously, appropriate engineering standards would prevail, but otherwise, I would expect them to be as shown.
Okay. And then, in terms of that design process, there would, is it correct that there would not be opportunity for public comment on that design unless a supplemental EIR was required?
There could be opportunity for public comment. I don't see any reason why this couldn't be, like, brought back to the MCMAC when the road's being designed, particularly if, yeah, I don't see any reason why that can't happen.
Other questions?
I just want to put a plug in that I think there needs to be an updated transportation plan, because I feel that the impacts to changing Central extend beyond the Q zone, and I'd like to see a transportation study done specifically on reducing the lanes, and that could be separate and apart from the design, prior to the design, and I also think that we need to have public comment on those designs. No offense to engineers in the room, but sometimes they don't consider all the community impacts.
Commissioner Mulder.
So, question about alternative one, in your, you were explaining something about the MCMAC didn't like alternative one because there was a five-foot something, there was a trailer or something like that, and I didn't quite catch it, and I couldn't, the fawn was too small, and I don't recall from when I was reading the studies.
One of the things that is unique about Central Avenue right now, is that along the east side of the road, there is a small area that is, at this point, looks like a kind of a meandering path. And that was developed with the understanding that that would be a bridle trail for horse traffic.
Okay. And then, just to get a better understanding, if I, this development could get completely built out and Central Avenue could never be changed if the funding wasn't there, is that correct? Because it's not, the way I understand it is that it's not the requirement of the developer to?
Yeah. Thank you, that's the reason I wanted to go look at the ordinance, and then I skipped right over that.
Okay.
That is correct, it identifies that the development within this area is not responsible for paying for the improvements on Central Avenue.
So Central Avenue, unless there's funding, will stay the same?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the new roads that are going to be completed, are those private roads, or will those be county roads, and who's going to maintain the trails and the new roads?
So, Nursery Way will be extended from currently where it is, down at basically Timber Ridge, up to Hiller. And that will be the responsibility of the project developer on the south side of Hiller. Most of the roads in McKinleyville are in PRDs, where money is collected to maintain the roads. And so I would expect that's the same thing that would happen with the extension of Nursery Way, Nursery Way, excuse me.
So they won't be county roads?
They will be county roads, but they'll be maintained through a financing district.
And the trails, who maintains?
The trails will probably either be in some kind of open space, and it could be MCSD that maintains that, could be another entity that maintains those. That typically is not something that gets dictated within a zoning ordinance. That would be something that gets looked at, at the time of development.
It was just, I read one comment about people worried about their taxes going up in McKinleyville, and so some of the questions I'm asking are helping me to answer those questions.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, I think we have a lot of members of the public that would like to address the commission, so unless we have other questions of Director Ford right now, I'd like to.
I've asked all my clarifying questions.
Open public comment, and I'll start in the room. I'll give each speaker three minutes, since we have several in the room and several online that are starting to raise their hand and also like to speak, so I appreciate if you could. Honor the time clock that's going here. Also, I'm going to ask that only one person speak at a time, so please do not talk over other speakers at the podium, I get kind of grumpy about that. So, with that, please, we'll start in the room. Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, my name's Kelly Garrett, I'm a McKinleyville resident for the last 13 years and homeowner. I'm also a retired environmental planner, mitigation, wetland mitigation specialist specifically. As a member of the McKinleyville Organizing Committee, I got involved with the Town Center Project back in 2017. Before the county picked it up to kick off, the McKinleyville Organizing Committee started bringing the community together in about 2015 to talk about, hey, let's get this plan launched, it's been languishing for the last 15 years, we really need this town center, a heart, a place that we can come together and gather, and, and. So, I thought that was a great idea when I heard about it, and I, hey, I'm all in, what can I do to help? We actually launched a pop-up museum to bring people together to talk about this getting into the public awareness, and the county did pick it up and went from there. I am very, I've been to nearly every town center meeting, and I'm sitting in this room tonight feeling pretty sad and disillusioned, I have a very empty feeling. I did write you a long letter, too much to say in three minutes, I hope that you've read it. Commissioners, the community is fractured at the Central Avenue safety fix, a fix the planning director says may take decades to implement. That debate is easier to grasp than the county's hallowed promises and regulatory gymnastics. But if the average citizen could wade through the thousand-plus pages of the FEIR, four-alarm fire bells would be ringing about the county sanctioned blitzing of six acres of MCP-protected wetlands. And we'd hear them again for the unaddressed significant safety risks, when just one year from now, hundreds of new K through six students will begin navigating five lanes of 35 mile-per-hour traffic with crossings that lack ADA sidewalks along Central. The ordinance and the FEIR cannot lawfully be approved, they failed the general plan, the McKinleyville Community Plan, and SEQA. The process sidelined the public with Brown Act violations, conflicts of interest, and ignored survey results. The FEIR dismissed traffic data and failed to analyze the actual project, which is the ordinance. Wetland protections were gutted by Section 6.4's relocation clause, a direct violation of Policy 15 and the general plan. And even before adoption, the county is already entertaining variance requests, while its own town center website failed to even post notice of this hearing tonight. These are outreach failures. And this isn't just policy failure, it's live failure, soon seniors and low-income neighbors will be living here too. Instead of knitting us together, this plan has opened fissures on safety, on wetlands, on trust. Look, there's no one here tonight. This was a joyous project when it kicked off.
Thank you. We do have your letter.
Good evening, I'm Wesley Chesbrough, I'm a resident and property owner in McKinleyville, and I'm asking you to vote to adopt the McKinleyville Town Center Plan as approved by the MCMAC, including traffic calming for Central Avenue and the higher housing densities that are in the plan. First, let me address traffic calming by describing an experience that I had recently, driving up Central Avenue, I was in the right-hand lane, and I came to the flashing light crossing for pedestrian safety, a couple of teens had pushed the button, started to cross the street. They walked in front of my car, I looked in my left-hand mirror, saw a car speeding up to my left, and sped through the crosswalk and missed those teens by inches. the crosswalk and missed those teens by inches. It was truly terrifying. I spent a moment trying to figure out if there was anything I could do to stop it. And thank God, they didn't get killed. So, there's no reason why the main street through McKinleyville has to be as wide as South Broadway, carrying 101s traffic through South Eureka, and that's what we have. Think about it. The five lanes that you drive on South Broadway to cover that... Carry that heavy traffic is the same width through the community of McKinleyville. My wife is one of a number of McKinleyville residents who, due to her disabilities, must use a mobility device to navigate our community. She uses an electric scooter, and we have a neighbor up the street who's confined to a power chair and regularly travels up Central. All of these individuals face major challenges when they seek to cross Central Avenue. When compared to their safety and that of kids, mothers pushing baby carriages, and our elders having the inconvenience of an extra minute or two to get into the shopping center pales by comparison. I also strongly support the higher-density housing designation that the McMac has proposed, along with the Life Plan Senior Housing Project, the Town Center Plan Housing Proposal, will help Humboldt County to meet its pressing housing needs while, at the same time, creating a more vibrant business environment for downtown McKinleyville. The Municipal Advisory Committee has put years of work into developing this plan, and I strongly encourage you to adopt it as they proposed it.
Peter Penneykamp, 10 years ago, I attended some of the very earliest meetings where a group of residents got together and started talking about what would a safe McKinleyville look like? What would it look like to have a center and stores and a place we could gather? And then, I didn't attend anything until the last two or three months. And to me, the whole thing's really heroic. You know, what people talked about 10 years ago is now what this plan is. No one's ever going to be happy about all the details. But what started, not with the bureaucracy, not with the Planning Department, not even with the McMac, has now grown into this thing that everyone's involved with. I just want to congratulate everyone. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Board of the Ann S. Pearson LNA Foundation. The foundation was established this year to guide the development of the Town Center parcels owned by Ann Pearson, which will come... The parcels will come into nonprofit ownership when her estate is settled. The foundation exists solely to serve the residents of McKinleyville, and Ann's only request being the land remain dedicated to public benefit. We strongly support the ordinance before you tonight, as recommended by the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee. This ordinance is the product of many years of public input and careful deliberation, and it reflects the community's vision for a town center that balances housing, services, open space, and ecological stewardship. In particular, we believe Section 6.4 achieves the right balance by requiring that wetlands be protected in place or, where appropriate, relocated under the safeguards of county, state, and federal regulations. This flexibility, combined with strong oversight, ensures both ecological protection and the ability to create a vibrant, walkable place where people can live, work, and play. We urge you to adopt the ordinance as recommended by the McMac, confident that it honors the community process, protects natural resources, and provides a framework for a healthy, sustainable town center for generations to come. On behalf of the Board, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sherry Duffendurfer. My husband and I are homeowners in McKinleyville. The ordinance before you represents the implementation of the Town Center goal identified in the McKinleyville Community Plan passed in 2002. Over the years, there have been many formal and informal meetings, surveys, workshops, and discussions about the best way to define this community focal point and center for social-community interaction. As a 45-year resident of McKinleyville, I have been involved in many of these activities and meetings, including the ones that have lasted well into the night. Especially during the last five years, I have witnessed and participated in the struggle and compromise between the diverse viewpoints in our community to craft an ordinance fulfilling the vision of a town center that establishes a unique identity for McKinleyville, one that will finish transforming McKinleyville from just a bedroom community serving Arcata and Eureka to a vibrant, thriving town. This ordinance is a comprehensive and thoughtful plan that balances residential, commercial, and environmental interests with the need to attract investors and developers. Importantly, it continues the improvements to make our community more walkable and bikeable and safe for all of us. I urge the Commission to recognize and support the hard work of the many people over these last 20 years by certifying the EIR and recommending the Town Center Ordinance as it is written to the Board of Supervisors. It is time for us to move forward in realizing this vision. 20 years is long enough. It's time to get started. I should also say that I am a Life Plan Humboldt... Humboldt Commons supporter. There are several of us in the audience today. If you want to raise your hand. And this ordinance needs to go forward so that we can be the first project in the new town center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Mary Burke. I'm the current Chair of the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee, and I have some reflections for you on where we are tonight. The draft ordinance before you, as you know, represents over five years of public meetings and workshops held by the McMac McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee, included input from people of McKinleyville, as well as local and nationally-recognized professional planners. As you read in the letters and here tonight, McKinleyville is a diverse community, and listening to these diverse voices has meant that the McMac had to make some difficult choices. Specifically, I want to talk... Speak to the traffic calming solution for Central Avenue. Rather than being a unanimous vote, as you heard, it reflects that our community has divergent needs and concerns. And while there's greater agreement in the community that Central Avenue needs to be made safer, more of the disagreement lies in how that's achieved. McMac's chosen traffic calming solution was felt to be the best option out of what was presented to calm traffic, but at the same time allow for our Community Services District to perform infrastructure maintenance. Out of these conversations comes the realization, and thank you for bringing this up immediately, Commissioner O'Neill, that McKinleyville needs a comprehensive circulation plan. In addition to Central, we need to look at the barriers. For example, school roads roundabout, which does not connect up to Washington, and other... And safe routes to schools. Thank you for clarifying how any changes to Central Avenue would have a long path ahead, and as Director Ford has said, would come back to the McMac. I also want to note, the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee has a longstanding subcommittee for active transportation that meets regularly, is working with the county on a number of fronts, and we invite members... Interested members of the public to come join us and grapple with these issues. So, one of the concerns McMac clearly heard was that reducing lanes on Central would have the potential to have unintended ripple effects within transportation infrastructure. While that is true, McKinleyville deserves a downtown that has a sense of place, a place that attracts people to live, work, and play. In order to achieve this, we know we have to slow vehicles and create safe streets, not just for cars, but for pedestrians, bicycle traffic, for all of us. Again, McKinleyville needs that comprehensive circulation plan. Our hope is for a McKinleyville with housing that's accessible to everyone, a community that creates the environment that is attractive for businesses, healthy for all people, as well as our environment. We hope that the zoning before you today is a step closer to realizing that dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Caspari. I'm a resident of McKinleyville. I'm also the General Manager of McKinleyville Community Services District and a member of the McMac. I have been authorized by the Board of Directors of the McKinleyville Community Services District to speak on behalf of the district in support of the proposed Town Center Ordinance. The Humboldt County Planning Department staff, and particularly Director Ford, have accomplished an exceptional task in working with the McMac and the community of McKinleyville to prepare an extremely well-crafted Town Center Ordinance. The Town Center Ordinance will not only benefit and guide the development of a McKinleyville Town Center to turn into a destination spot, but will be an asset for all of Humboldt County with improved housing, community, and business facilities. The ordinance facilitates the installation of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that will make Hiller and Central Avenue much safer for the community. It facilitates additional and extended trail networks in McKinleyville. It directs the improvement of very degraded wetlands to make them a source of improved habitat for wildlife and the public. It facilitates homes and workspaces in the urban center versus prompting urban sprawl that would impact undeveloped areas throughout the county. The ordinance benefits not only McKinleyville, but the entire county. Obviously, the much-needed addition of spaces for affordable housing, but also through development, such as the proposed Life Plan Humboldt Development, which will provide a much-needed senior living center that will benefit all residents of Humboldt County. The McMac and the Planning Department have spent six years, conducted over 40 public meetings, and held several workshops focused on the Town Center to solicit public input on the ordinance. It was the most focused and extensive public process that I've ever been part of in my 40 years of working in the public sector. Is it perfect? Probably not. Nothing in this world ever is. As Director Ford mentioned, the district has some concerns about the water infrastructure under Central Avenue, but we also commit to working with Public Works during the design to solve those issues. Even with its imperfections, the Town Center Ordinance is a valuable guide for the development and realization of a center for the community of McKinleyville that the community can be proud of. The McKinleyville Community Services District urges this commission to recommend the Board of Supervisors certify the EIR and adopt the Town Center Ordinance as writ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Maya Conrad. I'm a member... I'm a resident of McKinleyville, and I have been a member of the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee since the beginning of this Town Center process. And as Pat Caspari said, it's not perfect, but we have put our heart and soul into this process, and we are eternally grateful for Director John Ford and the Planning Department. The two things that really became very apparent to me when we began engaging with the community on this were McKinleyville really wants a heart of McKinleyville and a sense of place that's our own. Because, as another woman said, we're no longer a bedroom commi... Community. We very much have our own identity in McKinleyville, and we want that. The other thing that we heard over and over again is that our kids don't feel safe walking to school. People don't feel safe riding their bikes along Central. And so, as we gathered input and community feelings about the Town Center, I really tried to hear the current community input and also have an eye to the future. And we know that this Town Center isn't going to be developed overnight. And so, I think it's really important that we think about what our future holds. And even though some of the ideas that we came to agreement on may be scary, they may represent change that is hard for people to imagine, I believe in my heart that what we voted on is truly what will hopefully create a good future by creating more affordable housing and making a place where all people can access. So, I thank you for considering this tonight, and we are very proud of the work that we've done on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Roses. I'm a resident in McKinleyville. Been here for... In Humboldt County, about 13 years. So, I got involved a few years back with Mary and other folks related to bike trails. And one of the... What really got me involved is the fatality that we had on North Bank and the other fatality we had on... Right there by Grocery Outlet. And then, you know, I'm an avid cyclist, so I ride everywhere. And one of the things echoing a number of people here is that riding down Central is scary. These people drive like it's the Autobahn down this road. And even at all the lights, I've had cars turn right in front of me, even though I'm right next to them. So, it's a very dangerous road. And then, you see... If you've ever been down there, close to that middle school, when the kids are out, you get these... All these little kids walking around, and all these drivers that are distracted because they're not paying attention. They're on their phones, they're looking at... So, it's a very, very difficult... I mean, kind of scary place to ride. And I ride it all the time. And going back to Mr. Chesborough, I've seen that happen, where you have that light that comes on for the pedestrians, and people don't pay attention. And they... You might stop, and another car might pretty much almost plow them over. So, it's a very... A big concern. But the other thing I've been hearing in this meeting, Mr. Ford said, people ripping through Central Avenue. He's right. All these things, you know, this project that is great, but the problem is, what I also hear is that there's no funding. It's an unfunded project. So, you know, there's other ways that maybe there might be, you know, in addition to a... Maybe a transportation plan for McKinleyville, but also a funding plan. How are we going to fund these improvements? These pedestrian and bike improvements, when it sounds to me that everything is... It's all plans, but nothing to implement them. So, maybe, you know, these developments that are coming in, why aren't they partially funding these pedestrian and bike facilities that are part of this plan? I mean, I think there's a number of Life Plan Humboldt people back here that maybe those developments, like Life Plan Humboldt, should be putting in money to actually put in some of these features that is part of this plan. So, I'm all about the road diet and trying to reduce the speed and make it a much safer and much more pleasant place to be in McKinleyville. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bonnie McGregor. It is pretty amazing to be at this point after 10 years. I was involved also before the McMac got started. So, I want to thank all the McMac members and Director Ford and the Planning Department for all the work they've put into. I would like to ask for one small adjustment that I think will make a big difference as to... And enhance this project or this vision. And that is to change the size of the open space... Designated open space from 20,000 square feet, which is less than a quarter... A half an acre, to one acre. What that will do... I went back and realized that when the McMac approved that 3% of the developable land, that was before Life Plan Humboldt was established as developed land. So, that 3% would have had three and a half acres of open space. Now, we're down to one and a half acres of open space for... With all this wonderful new development, mostly in that space behind Safeway that's left. So, to have the only minimal space be a half acre is going to be... You know, you're going to have buildings on all sides. There'll be shade. It won't be the kind of place where people can gather and actually develop space around it, stores and housing above. Who doesn't want to be on a square, a town center, green space or plaza of an acre? That's pretty close to what Arcata's Plaza is. I think it would be an enhancement of... It would be a draw. And it would be a place where people from outside the Town Center can come together with people who are living in the Town Center, and we can have a sense of community right there. Some people point to, well, we have Pearson Park, and that's true, and it's wonderful, and 17,000 of us go to events there. It's not the same. There's no commercial space and residence there. So, we need this extra space. So, what I'm asking is that you just adjust that from 20,000 to an acre. And that would mean, actually adjusting it from 3% of that 54 acres spot, that would only... spot, that would only be one and a half acres of open space to four percent, which would be two acres. So, one acre combined and another acre spread throughout. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Hodgson. I was a reporter in, for Humboldt County for over forty years, starting my career in nineteen eighty-one. In the nineteen eighties, I worked for the Arcata Union, and then since nineteen ninety, the North Coast Journal. I've covered hundreds of public meetings, including three decades of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, and probably eight to ten years of the McKinleyville Services District in the old days. I remember many of the meetings regarding the design and widening of Central Avenue, the current thing that we have now. There was a lot of good in that plan, that came out of that plan. There's better drainage, certainly, the underground utilities, the landscaping, the sidewalks, even the hanging flower baskets. But that five-lane road through the center of that community that is wider than the freeway that it parallels, it was just bad planning in those days. It encourages speeding. Anytime, this has been addressed by two people tonight, anytime you have two lanes going in one direction, you, people will pass you on the left and they'll pass you on the right because they just want to get to where they're going five minutes faster. It's just plain dangerous. There was opposition to five lanes back then. Some called it overbuilt, and there were many who, of course, really opposed the removal of the cypress trees in the old days, which were certainly traffic calmers, which we talk about a lot. Unfortunately, those forward-thinking people forty or so years ago were outvoted. You have tonight before you a chance to fix all that. It took, you've heard all the time that it's taken to get to this point. And we owe a great deal of thanks for the last five years of work with the McMac. From when I started going to their meetings, I was amazed at what they've done to get us to this place. What I want you to think about tonight is a scale. On one hand, you have the foot traffic that will only increase. You have bicyclists who are commuters, or they're just out for recreation. You have students getting out of school. You have people on walkers and scooters. You have moms with strollers. On this side, you have cars who can darn well slow down and take their time to go five blocks. And that's, that should be a no-brainer. So, please, I hope you make the right decision tonight and protect the vulnerable citizens.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Oliver, and I'm a thirty-three-year resident of McKinleyville and raised my three children in McKinleyville. They all went to McKinleyville schools. I'm also a member of the McMac since two thousand nineteen and have been secretary and notekeeper for the majority of those years. So, I know about all the comments and everything that the processes and all the motions and have many binders to prove, prove that. I'm also the chair, administrative chair of the Committee for Active Transportation. So, I've been involved in the multimodal study and a lot of transportation issues, a current quick-build project on Hiller Road, which is taking up a lot of my time right now. But anyway, even before I was on the McMac, I was part of the McKinleyville Organizing Committee and helped with the pop-up museum. And I was actually the curator of the Town Center Room in that museum. Put up all the maps, developed a map that said, "Color your Town Center Dream," so that the kids who came could start thinking about that. And that's who this Town Center is being designed for, is that next generation. As we know, those projects, those buildings along Central aren't going to be torn down for another ten years. And the changes to Hiller or to Central might take longer than we want them to. But, but yeah. Did anyone's one colored picture get totally reflected in this ordinance? No. But people had a vision of a place that included both green space and development and things that they wanted in a Town Center, and we did our best to bring all those different views together. And I urge you to certify the EIR and adopt the Town Center Ordinance, or send it on to the Commissioner, or to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Miles. I'm a resident in McKinleyville. I'm a homeowner, and I am the Executive Director of the McKinleyville Chamber of Commerce. I thank you very much for the opportunity to comment tonight. The chamber's vision is to nurture business and build community, and the Town Center will directly shape both of these things. Many of our members, from small family-run shops to larger employers, are eager to see thoughtful development that provides opportunity without losing the character of McKinleyville. We appreciate the work McMac has done to move this recommendation forward. We consistently hear several key priorities from businesses and residents: a mix of retail, housing, and public space that supports local businesses and working families; infrastructure and traffic solutions that make the area safe and accessible; and design that reflects McKinleyville's unique and developing identity. The Town Center is a chance to create a hub that is uniquely McKinleyville. We are hopeful it will balance economic growth, livability, and community identity while being friendly for new and existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Debbie Egger, and I have been a resident of McKinleyville for forty-four years. And I am retired, but worked for the Humboldt County Association of Governments for twenty-four years. And with my working there, I am very aware of the regional housing needs process. And just this evening at the HCOG meeting, I heard Supervisor Madrone talk about the McKinleyville Town Center, which I am a hundred percent in favor of. But one of the things that he stated is that within twenty years, McKinleyville is going to have an increase of six thousand people. That's a lot of people coming to McKinleyville, and that's not even counting how many residents that the state is going to mandate the county take on. And we know that McKinleyville is going to take on the majority of those residents. I do know that there's a lot of advocates, advocates here that have worked hard on this Town Center and that they do want to see people out of cars. I live in McKinleyville, and to hear some of the stories of how horrible Central Avenue is, it's like we don't live in the same town because I honestly do not see that on a regular basis. And what, what I'm asking, one of the things I did listen in on the McMac meeting for the first time, and I did look at the EIR report, and in it, Director Ford states that the two-lane configuration would complicate and possibly delay emergency responses. That is super concerning to me, and I do have a friend who lives in McKinleyville as well. Just last week, she had to call nine-one-one because her daughter tried to commit suicide, and the fire department responded to that call. If it had been delayed one, two, or three minutes, it could be a life-threatening disaster. So, I would ask that this board really think about the road diet part of the ordinance and not make a motion on that until more work can be done on it, because that portion of road is where the fire department is. And so, if they have a hard time getting out of there, I mean, when I try to get out of Central Credit Union, sometimes it takes me a long time. And so, I'd really like for you to consider that portion of the ordinance. And I thank and commend everybody for all of the work they've done on this Town Center. I think it's going to be a great thing, but we have to think McKinleyville is growing, and we're not going to get people out of their cars. If six thousand people come, there's going to at least be two thousand more cars. And so, I'd really like for you to stop and consider that portion and not make a decision on the road diet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, and good evening. My name is Deborah Lankella, and I have been a resident of McKinleyville since my parents moved up from Southern Humboldt in nineteen sixty-seven. I currently do live in Philbrook right now, but I frequent McKinleyville, and I have explained that the last meeting I was at here. My concerns, one question I have is the easement, the sidewalks that are along Central right now, are they maximized? Is there more easement space there that can be utilized? That was one question I had. And those sidewalks, I mean, we've got trees and they meander. You know, what if we take out the trees, straighten them, and maybe put up some kind of, maybe smaller tree? And that could, would be safer for pedestrians and bikers and our moms with strollers and our mamas with their grandchildren. Also, I do feel that the traffic along Central, we do need a further investigation on that. A traffic study would be very nice. I drive that road a lot, and I, I talk to people, and they don't want to see that reduced down. I don't know why they don't come to these meetings. I have tried, you know, and rallied them. I was really hoping tonight we would get some, but, you know, they just didn't come. But if you read the Facebook comments, you will see that people are against the road diet. Also, another thing I want to say is about the vision of McKinleyville. I mean, I've been there for a long time. I don't think vision, and this is my opinion, I don't think the vision of McKinleyville is a four-story buildings in, in the Town Center. I'm sorry, I don't. I want that village. I want that country feel, you know, is what I would like. And I know I'm not alone in that. And also, I want to bring also the attention to the safety personnel. If we shrink Central down, because I, somebody made a comment about Paradise. They did that just before the fire, and when the fire happened, they couldn't get out. People just gave up and just waited in parking lots because there wasn't enough space for people to get their cars out, to get out. McKinleyville catching on fire is probably really rare, but it is something we need to think about. What if there is a disaster? How would we get out? You know? And they want to push us to these other roads, Hiller, McKinleyville, and these are not developed. And I'm also concerned about McKinleyville being kind of a dumping ground. Here we are, we start these projects, there's not enough money for all of it to be done, so we get part of it done. And I don't want McKinleyville to be like that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Carrie Venegas, McKinleyville resident and dedicated walker. I have to say, one, I really appreciate all the work that's been done in this. I actually attend a lot of government meetings just for my job, and I'm having a hard time following this. So, I'll be one of those people who really should have come to more meetings and actually has not been able to, so catching up. I have just a couple of, I have concerns about the road diet. The reality is, is that the majority of us who live and work have to work somewhere else besides McKinleyville, and it is a bottleneck currently. I do think things need to be slowed down, but I think it needs more examination. Having done a lot of disaster response and recovery work lately in my role, my professional role, I have concerns about getting people in and out because we already have huge bottlenecks. So, what happens if we do have to evacuate? I guess I'd like to see some of the disaster plan around that. I really like the idea of mixed density, and I know we're going to be housing people, and right now, the single-family structures are not our best bet. But I do have concerns about four stories. Four stories changes a lot of what I value about living in Humboldt and living in a rural area. But those things are things that will advance, right? And they could possibly change. And the last thing I want to say is that if we're going to talk about traditional village, I think I'd rather talk about Sumag than any village in the East Coast, but just saying, maybe not practical, but that's our traditional villages here. And just thinking, again, what does the character look like for that? And I have to say, Central Ave, as a person who walks more than fifteen, twenty miles a week, especially around my own neighborhoods, there are far more dangerous spots. Central Ave is one I need to put it in relaxed gear because I have sidewalks. Sutter, Hiller, and don't even get me started on Grocery Outlet because I've almost been killed there twice. So, it'd be nice to slow it down, make it safer, but I do think that right now, it's a lot safer than most of the other parts of McKinleyville. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all that spoke from in the room. We have, at least, see, right now, I see three hands up online. I'm going to go to the online callers. And Sherry Newell, you're first. Press star six, you're unmuted. And the rest of you, if anybody else wants to raise their hand that's online, it's star nine to raise your hand.
Well, thank you very much. It's rare that I get to be first, so that's very exciting. It's been really wonderful to listen to the comments and to hear how many longtime McKinleyville residents have spoken and their passion for their community. My husband and I are relatively new to McKinleyville. We moved here full-time in two thousand twenty, but we had been exploring the area since about two thousand eleven when our daughter came here to school. I have been a bit on the sidelines for all of the work being done by the McMac, but I'm here tonight to express my support for not only the work that they have done, but for the EIR and the, and the ordinance for the Town Center. It's such an exciting thing to think about that a community can spend twenty years working on something and day by day, year by year, create a vision. And what I saw tonight, and Director Ford, you did a great job in your presentation, I saw a vision for what this community could be. And yeah, there's a lot of questions to answer, and we, it's a lot of agreements to be made, and we have a long ways to go, but we needed a vision, and I think we have that vision now. And when you compare or combine the vision for the Town Center with Humboldt Commons, this is going to be such an exciting development in this community to bring us together and to, to make a place for our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids. And so, I just want to say that as a relatively new resident in McKinleyville, I am really proud to live here. So, thank you very much, and I hope that Commissioners, that you do support this project going forward, and we get it before the Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Colin Fisk, and then, following Colin Fisk will be Jen Calt.
Good evening. My name is Colin Fisk. I'm with CRTP. Many of CRTP's eight hundred members and supporters are McKinleyville residents, and many more of them rely on McKinleyville for shopping, healthcare, education, recreation, and so on. I lived in McKinleyville myself for years, and I care deeply about it. CRTP has been engaged with Town Center planning since the process started about six years ago, and we are truly excited to see the ordinance move toward adoption. We encourage you to recommend adoption of the ordinance as written. Of course, that's not because we think it's perfect or agree with everything about it. It's because we think it's a well-considered compromise that is the result of key issues being considered and reconsidered by the McMac over six years, and because we know it will be a catalyst for the development of a future Town Center that McKinleyville and the whole region can be proud of. Because the design of Central Avenue has become a particular point of controversy, I'm going to address that specifically. As a transportation professional, I know the current design of Central Avenue is not safe, and it is also not conducive to a thriving civic and business district. Personally, I have ridden down Central Avenue many times on my bike with cars speeding past only inches away. Often, I've been forced out into the roadway by blockages in the bike lane. I've often had to make a left turn into a business on my bike, which means crossing two lanes of traffic, waiting in that two-way turn lane with cars and trucks speeding by on both sides, and pulling off behind me and in front of me to make their own turns, hoping they would see me, and even hoping that when I pulled into the parking lot, a driver wouldn't back out out of a parking space into me, and that there might be a place, a signpost or a railing even, just to lock my bike. It's not a welcoming environment. It's not a place I would bring a kid or an older person to walk or bike, or would recommend a blind person or a person in a wheelchair visit if they had the choice. It's not a place that would attract shopping or dining or community building. So, you know, clearly, some things have to change, and I think the McMac saw that. The changes they recommended to Central, of course, it's not exactly what I would have designed. Everyone has their ideal street in mind. not exactly what I would have designed. Everyone has their ideal street in mind, and no one will be fully satisfied. But the MCMAC's plan will be a major improvement, and it will create a more successful town center. I think overall, the town center ordinance as proposed is a transformative, thoughtful, and really good compromise of diverse views. I would encourage you not to reopen decisions like the Central Avenue design, because I think you will not succeed at making people on any side of the issue more happy. At CRTP, we can see past any of the minor disagreements we may have with the ordinance. We know our agreements are much bigger and more important. We know the ordinance is informed by research, by best practices, and by years of public dialogue. We're excited to move ahead and urge you to recommend adoption of the ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jen Kalt, followed by eight, three, three, six.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jennifer Kalt. I live in McKinleyville. I've lived here for many years, and I live off of Hiller, west of the town center. And I just am so thrilled to see this day actually happening after so many years. You know, I just, I really want to thank the, all the members of the MCMAC for all their dedicated service to the community and for everyone who showed up to all those meetings. And I especially, I also want to thank Director Ford, because I think a lot of us here in McKinleyville recognize a lot of the problems with McKinleyville, the way it is today, were caused by the lack of planning and community input at the county level. And Director Ford has really made a lot of changes to the way the county views McKinleyville. And I especially want to thank all the people who were involved in the McKinleyville Community Plan, which had the vision to set aside this huge area of infill within the center of our town, to make sure that we had the town center someday. And, you know, I, do I agree with every single point in the plan as it is written in the ordinance today? No, I don't. But I really appreciate the fact that it's flexible to be refined in the future. I think that's really important because, as we see the McKinleyville Community Plan in, you know, 2002, people had different ideas of what was a good idea. So I really support the road diet for Central Avenue, and the bike pad safety features are critical. I also, I kind of wish the building sizes were a little bit taller, because there are so many choices for single-family homes in McKinleyville, but what we really need is more affordable housing. You know, people who make seventy-five thousand dollars a year for a family of four are considered low-income, and there are a lot of people in McKinleyville that fit that category, and we need a lot more choices for them. So I strongly urge you to adopt this as written and approved by the MCMAC, which has done a phenomenal job over many, many years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have caller with the last number of eight, three, three, six, and then that will be followed by Raylina.
Hello. My name's Elaine Johnson, and I've been going to MCMAC meetings since June. And this is when I just found out about MCMAC, that there was a MCMAC. I was mostly aware of McKinleyville Community Service District. I've lived here since 2005, and I was like, how come I didn't know this? So I'm really concerned with public input over the years. I'm not on Facebook. I'm not going to, you know, the, you know, music in the parks, parties. And, you know, I'm kind of a private person, but I still need to be informed. I, I'm a high, I used to be a high school teacher in the Bay Area. I moved to McKinleyville in 2005, worked at City of Arcata and County of Humboldt in accounting, worked at Hsu. So I understand numbers. I understand details, both math and reading. And yet, going through this, trying to catch up on all that's going on with the town plan, it was very confusing, and that's why I'm a little bit concerned about the wetlands in particular. I've heard people on MCMAC and, you know, people who are involved in this, this process, don't seem to understand it, and have, you know, bowed out of making a decision because they're not sure of, you know, they haven't read one thousand sixty-three pages of this plan. And so, you know, the red flags are going off for me. And so I'm really concerned. I think it was Bonnie McGregor that mentioned open space. So I'm a huge advocate of the wetland preservation and open space. I know that change is inevitable, but I don't think we have to go hog-wild with change. I think we do have to be mindful of, you know, who Humboldt County is. You know, this has been revered by residents and tourists alike as the most beautiful place, one of the most beautiful places on earth. We get an A-plus on air quality, but we do have to make a plan to find out this six-thousand population growth that's coming, to have a balance between our growth and ecology, ecological health. I'm an advocate of the four stories. We're not like Arcata. We're not like Eureka. We can't spread out. We got mountains on one side and the ocean on the other. We're a narrow strip, and it's a lot of roads here that are private roads that don't go through. It's just kind of a mess here. And so I'm really concerned, but I'm still an advocate for two lanes, because I've been terrified about hearing all these stories of pedestrians and bicyclists, and especially all the middle schoolers.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We go to Raylina, please, and you'll be followed by five, nine, eight, six.
Hello. My name is Raylina Crichton. I'm a Humboldt resident and housing advocate. I'd like to express my strong support for the McKinleyville Town Center draft plan. This plan represents more than two decades of public input and careful considerations, and it reflects the shared vision of countless community members, who are working tirelessly to create a more livable, walkable, and connected McKinleyville. For far too long, Central Avenue has functioned as a high-speed corridor rather than a vibrant main street for our community deserves. This draft plan's proposed road diet is a critical step toward improving safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike. By calming traffic and enhancing walkability, it will create an inviting environment where people can gather, shop locally, and feel proud of their town center. The plan's support for mixed-use development is equally important. By allowing housing, shops, and services to coexist, McKinleyville can grow in a way that meets the needs of residents while reducing sprawl and vehicle dependency. This thoughtful approach will provide homes close to jobs, schools, and parks, improving quality of life and supporting local businesses. I strongly encourage the board to support both higher residential density and flexible building heights. Right now, the draft caps, the draft caps buildings at four stories, which can discourage development when land and construction costs are high. Instead, set a four-story as baseline while explicitly allowing extra height through density bonuses, with step-down transitions applying to existing lower-density neighborhoods. By permitting mixed-use density calculations to allow residential units above commercial uses to count towards density bonuses, this encourages vibrant, walkable main street development without penalizing projects for including shops or offices. More importantly, these additions are congruent with state interpretations of mixed-use density rules and maintain sensitivity to nearby residential areas through step downs. Additionally, the draft could provide local incentives for affordable housing. State laws provide the minimum requirements, but McKinleyville can add local benefits to make projects more attractive. The inclusion of a simple checklist in the town center plan that explains how a project can qualify for the density bonus would be a nice addition. Finally, the inclusion of green spaces and natural resource protections ensure the growth is balanced with our values of environmental stewardship. Features like wetlands enhancements will not only support wildlife, but create recreational opportunities for residents to enjoy. This draft represents a major step forward for Humboldt County. It strikes the right balance between honoring McKinleyville's natural character and embracing a future where people can live, work, and play in a safe, thriving, and sustainable community. I urge you to adopt the plan as written and move forward with the vision so many have shaped over the past twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have caller, last number is five, nine, eight, six. Can we unmute them, or star six to unmute? There we go.
Hey, my name's Randy Sundberg. I'm a lifelong resident in McKinleyville to date, and I've worked all over the North Coast, Northern California, running upwards of five traffic control crews in District One, District Two, and District Three, which encompasses a lot of Northern California. Anyways, one of the last jobs we did in McKinleyville involved replacing some of the water main jobs, or water main lines down Central Avenue. Most of that was night work. And during that job, we toned off, you know, one lane of Central, and my office received probably more complaints than any other job I've ever been on, working all over the state. We had traffic backed up clear over Bella Vista at rush hour. I'm here to say that I'll volunteer my crew for a week of traffic control, to tone a lane off, to see how it impacts traffic flow, for you guys to make a more informed decision on this road diet deal. Therefore, I'm against necking down Central to one lane. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have, now I have caller four, six, one, five. Star, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can.
All right. This is Dennis Mayo, and I concur with what the last caller said completely. I've been on the Board of the Services District for pushing twenty years now. I'm a seventy-year resident in McKinleyville. And myself, John Corbett, then Shepard, Supervisor Sundberg, were the progenitors of the MCMAC. And we busted our butt to get this thing going so it would be a voice for our community, and we appreciate the work that they do. I support almost everything in this hard-fought plan, but the road diet is ridiculous. It is the worst thing that we could do to this community, and it will be a problem for the town center. The town center and the walkability is a super, super concept. Central Avenue has great traffic flow. There's some occasional problems, but I want to tell you that the Highway Patrol, the Fire Department, the California Insurance Association, all say that Central Avenue is very safe. As a matter of fact, California Insurance Association says Central Avenue is the fifth-safest boulevard of its type in traffic flow in the whole state of California. So I go everywhere in town. I talk to everybody, the barber shop, the feed store, the restaurants, the rodeo ground, and I can tell you, the MCMAC has failed on this particular point of view. Nobody, the majority of people in the town just do not want this road diet deal done. It'll make a bottleneck. It'll push traffic down onto McKinleyville Avenue, which is already overburdened. Let's work on our circulation, which people confuse circulation, and they think it has to be Central Avenue. The roundabout down on School Road is going to be our, we already have it down on School Road, but we're going to put some other roundabouts in and places. That's really, really good. Anyway, cut to the chase. We, I support the work that we've done for the majority of the town center concept. You've got to leave Central Avenue alone. It is ridiculous. Thank you for your time, and thank everybody for their hard work. We hopefully can agree to disagree if all else fails.
All right. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more hands up online, and I don't see anybody else in the room, so I think we can close public hearing. I think everyone that took time to speak tonight. Director Ford, I know we heard a lot of comments about the road and the road diet. Did we hear anything that would, any additional environmental concerns that haven't been covered in the EIR?
I haven't heard anything new tonight.
Any new mitigation?
No.
No. Okay. Okay. Is there anything that you wanted to respond to with respect to the comments?
There's not, there wasn't really a lot, though. One thing I did want to respond to is that the 1.5 acres of open space, that does include the, let's see if I get this right, Humboldt Commons.
It does.
Yes.
Okay.
So I showed that map, showing that there was about thirty-five acres in the Pearson property, about fourteen-point-two acres in the Humboldt Commons property, and about four-point-three acres in the, on Picket Road. So that's what adds up to fifty-four acres. Fifty acres adds up to 1.5 acres of open space at three percent.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I'm not questioning the ask that was there. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Some of the comments are regarding Central Avenue. We're requesting that we make sure we include, or continue to include, a public engagement process as the project goes forward, maybe continue to involve the MCMAC. I also heard something about comprehensive traffic circulation plans.
Mm-hmm.
Are those things that can be required now, or are those?
I would say those are things that, if you were to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that you could work that into their resolution, that it wouldn't have to be necessarily embedded into the ordinance itself, but could be embedded into the recommendation to the Board, that, you know, comprehensive transportation plan be prepared for McKinleyville, and that any future design work associated with Central Avenue be coordinated with the MCMAC to allow public review, public input.
Okay. And Commissioner Mulder, and then Commissioner O'Neill.
So on the transportation thing, we did hear public testimony that someone offered to cone off a lane for a whole week before we made a decision on what we would, on the road diet. And I guess, is that something, if we delayed the decision, I mean, I don't know if we're going to get there in ten minutes, but is that something that could be considered?
Actually, Public Works offered that, too.
Okay.
I mean, that is something that could be done.
That's not the same as a, as a comprehensive transit plan and a design, you know, with the designs now, the way the signals and the modeling are all integrated and computerized and linked together, and phased at different times of the day depending on traffic flow. Cone off the lane with the current traffic configuration, it's just going to create a traffic jam. So we already know that.
Some of us don't believe that it could create a traffic jam, so.
I suspect that it would, but.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's me. I'm just saying of the testimony that we've received, some, I would say some that.
It won't demonstrate that a road diet won't work, is what I'm saying. Because the way the intersections are configured today are four, two-lane road. So if you take a lane out, it doesn't work the same way. And that's not what the future proposal is doing exactly. So that's all I'm saying. It's not, in my view, you would not be recreating what the proposed project is by coning off a lane.
I've worked with Randy Sundberg for probably thirty years.
I've worked with Randy Sundberg for probably 30 years, and I respect his opinion. He's very well-versed in traffic. I do think we need a field study of what the impacts are going to be with the existing population, let alone 6,000 more people added to the community. And I still, you know, I want to put a plug in for McKinleyville. If we add 6,000 new residences and commercial properties and increase the tax bases of the county, that those revenues get proportionally funneled back to McKinleyville to improve our roads, because, you know, it's one thing to say we want everybody to be able to walk around this new queue zone safely, but getting there is a problem. And, you know, we're moving schools around, but we're not considering the impacts, you know, when there's no sidewalks for the kids to get there. I walk around those roads, and I wear bright, you know, colors, and I almost ran over. You literally are plotting every step to make sure you're not going to get ran over. So, it's not just one area that we need to worry about. We need to worry about, you know, multiple roads. Every time we do a project and someone comes in here and says, "Oh, it's going to cost too much if I put sidewalks in here, and I don't want to put parking, and I don't want to do this," we circumvent good planning for the future, and that's what McKinleyville is. You know, it was poor planning in the beginning, but as we move forward, we need to do better planning. And I don't know what the answer is on this road diet, but I'd like to know more information. You know, I respect all the planning that's been put into this in the 20-plus years. I worked in McKinleyville in the 1970s, and now I live in McKinleyville, and I'd like to see good planning, and I think that there's been a lot, you know, and you've been a part of it. You live in McKinleyville. You've been a part of this planning for a number of years. So, I'm willing to pass the plan as it's presented in the ordinance, but I still want to see more on this road diet to make sure that we don't create a big mess, because I don't feel like I have the information I need to say it's good or bad. It's going to be safer, or, you know, it's going to slow people down or make people behave better. It could create more problems. And so, I just like, on that one aspect of this plan, I think there needs to be more information, and that information then would be fed to the engineers who would make the designs. And in terms of, you know, funding the project, I've been faced with unsurmountable issues. 30 miles of Bald Hills Road, 30 miles of power line upriver, and wondered where is this money going to come from? And it comes. You know, if you're on it and you've got a plan, it could be just a conceptual plan, you've got some budgets, and you've got people that are actively applying for everything, working with the county, because on the Bald Hills Road, that was a $30 million project, and working with Public Works, we got it funded. And we funded it section by section by section. And so, it's really important that you get a plan that's more than just, you know, written words. It has to be a picture, it has to be drawings, it has to be budgets, and it'll come, and you'll do it in sections. But it has to be more than just the queue zone for McKinleyville. We need much more than that.
I do plan on picking your brain about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
I thought somebody else had raised their hand first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not sure about that.
Go ahead.
I'll be very brief, because I don't feel like I have a whole lot that's new to add here. I do really appreciate the work that has gone into this by McMac, by the community, by the Planning and Building Department. I completely agree that while I support this plan as written, and I do support the road diet as proposed and amended by McMac, that I think there's a potential for problems to result from that if we do not also have a traffic circulation plan. And it's actually sort of a blessing that this won't happen first, you know, that this is the very beginning of a process that will lead to that. I think it will, having this ordinance pass, having that plan be so well-defined will help to the process of raising funding for it, but it's going to take some time before that work can be done. And I think it's really incumbent on us as a county to do that plan, do that study, and I would support a motion that adds that as a recommendation to what we recommend to the Board.
Commissioner Mulder.
So, what I'm hearing be said is, like, maybe try to move this along, but make more things about the traffic part, like more information coming before the Board of Supervisors, and then not try to hash that out tonight. Is that kind of what I'm hearing a couple of you say? Okay. Because I, I mean, for me, I mean, I could be potentially biased, because I'm a Class A contractor, done a lot of roads, all that kind of stuff, but I see the road diet as this extreme challenge, and, but it's okay to agree to disagree, and like, you know, if someone does a circulation study, as you were recommending, then you can really see where the challenges are, and, you know, maybe they aren't challenges that we believe. You know, I don't drive in McKinleyville all the time, so, you know, I think if we went somewhere along that line, we might be able to somehow find an agreement tonight. I don't know.
Commissioner Curieozzi.
Thank you. Can I, through the chair, can I clarify? We have a talk about a circulation study. I'm not exactly clear how that would be attached to a motion. Can I clarify from staff, maybe a recommendation of what that might look like?
Yes. I would include that as part of the Planning Commission's action, and where at the end of the resolution, the end of it says, "The Planning Commission now takes these actions," that you add the actions there to recommend that the Board of Supervisors require a comprehensive transportation plan being done before the road diet is designed and completed, and that all the future comprehensive transportation planning and any design work for Central Avenue be done in coordination with the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee to enable public input and discussion.
You should include public works within that, I think. Wouldn't they have something to say about it?
Public Works will be doing that work. It's just now the Board would be directing them to have those things done.
Commissioner Mulder, and then Commissioner Curieozzi.
Okay, so, off-traffic, open space. We did hear testimony about maybe one acre minimum, and my, like, you know, some people referenced Arcadis Plaza, which it's great sometimes, and then sometimes you get to experience people smoking crack and all kinds of other things while you're walking down the street with your child, and explain to them what that's about, or, you know, other kinds of behaviors. So, if there was a large, open space, put in there bigger than 20,000 square feet, I would hope that there's the community to deter that kind of behavior there as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Curie, any other comments? Okay.
I guess maybe, just to clarify that, I also am in support of the ordinance as proposed. And, yeah, I think, I think I could support a traffic study as a condition for starting any work on Central. I think it does make sense. I think it does go back to, I think, issues which Commissioner O'Neill brought up, and we've talked about a couple of times in other projects, where we're looking at individual projects and whether or not to approve a sidewalk, and then we come into this conflict of, well, does this sort of meet the overall flow for that community or that particular area or residential area? So, I do think that that could help with that broader planning. I, a little bit of hesitance on my part, just in terms of, I don't, it's sort of the same thing of, like, putting on conditions that can delay a project, but I'm not hearing opposition from staff, and it sounds like that will help get us there, so I can support that.
Yeah. Sometimes, conditions that you think might delay a project actually end up being the thing that helps get a project accomplished, too, so you never, never know. I also have concerns about the road diet. I don't know, from reading just the information that we had here, if it works in McKinleyville or not, and what the traffic flows are, that, all that work still needs to be done. I know as, through my engineering practice and the company that does work on, you know, traffic work, people used to also fight roundabouts, and I heard somebody speaking tonight that was against the road diet talk about roundabouts, so. They've kind of come a ways, and there are a lot of communities that have been through this process, and, you know, if you're ever driving the 101 and you want to get off and go through Ukiah, or Petaluma, or Healdsburg, or Tucati, you'll see examples of that. So, it is being done, and the technology does exist now to, you know, have different signal timing at different times of the day, and different traffic events, and during, you know, release from school, and all these other things that traffic planners can build into the roadway. You can actually find out that a two-lane road can accommodate as much or more traffic than a four-lane road under certain, you know, when it's designed properly. So, I think that information still has to come out. I think there has to be more public input and involvement and education, because people are upset about this and don't quite understand what's going on, and when you say, taking a five-lane road to three lanes in an already congested area, it doesn't sound practical to most people, and I think that's, that's a concern we're having here. So, I support the modifications that we're proposing to help get more information, see if the project's actually going to be functional for McKinleyville.
I'll just, maybe, hopefully will be a piece of information that might help people that are concerned about this road diet, and that speed, the concern of going down to one lane is you have more cars, and you're concerned that that road can't, can carry that volume of cars. And a lot of times that people think, well, you need to increase the speeds in order to carry the same amount of vehicles, and that isn't true. So, an example would be a single-lane road that has a speed limit of 25 miles per hour can carry 1,000 cars per hour. And there was, you know, thrown out that roughly this road carries 10,000 cars a day. So, we're talking about, we should, I'm not that concerned, I guess. I think a study will certainly help, but if you start digging into the engineering and you start digging into the publications, peer-reviewed publications, and the research around this, there are proven solutions to carry the volume of traffic that Central likely sees in a way that achieves what this is looking to do. So, yeah, hopefully that's helpful for the public out there.
Are we, are we ready for a motion?
You want me to make it? Let me find it. Okay, so, that the Planning Commission requests that staff, we already got the report. Is that the motion that you want?
Yeah, in fact, I can put it up if you want. Actually, I got out of it. It should.
Do we start with A, B, C, and D?
Yep.
So, adopt the resolution to certify the environmental impact report, including adopting findings of overriding consideration for the McKinleyville Town Center zoning amendment ordinance attachment one, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program attachment six. Adopt the resolution to make all the required findings for approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to change the zoning in the Town Center to mixed use with a queue zone overlay to establish development criteria attachment two. Adopt the ordinance to change the zoning in the Town Center to mixed use and with a queue zone overlay to establish development criteria attachment three. And then, do you want to word the addition?
I would, yes. And then add to attachment two, under the action of the Planning Commission, to recommend that the Board of Supervisors require that a comprehensive transportation plan be prepared for McKinleyville before implementation of the road diet, and that any design for, or any work on the comprehensive transportation plan, or any work on the road diet be coordinated with the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee to allow public input.
Sounds good.
We have a motion from Commissioner O'Neill. Second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Curieozzi. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Curieozzi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scaball?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. So, we move forward. We have no items, no items pulled from consent tonight. Director Ford, we have a report from Planner. And I do want to thank everybody for all your hard work on this before you, it's appreciated.
Not tonight, Chair.
Okay. Any planning, Commissioner, discussion items?
I just want to mention that I heard that Commissioner West Hat and her partner Kevin had their baby June last night.
Oh, that's correct.
A girl named June. And that's all I got, but they seem to be doing well.
Oh, that's exciting. Congratulations to them.
I want to say that I may not be able to make the October 2nd meeting, so I wanted to let you know of that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good evening. Travel safe. Meeting adjourned.